That's fine. Okay, so we're gonna have to give her a microphone.
Thank you. I know that's particularly special. We will have your last experience ceremony. Yes, it is. So thank you so much. So next, we are going to do the election of officers.
Do you have your microphone on, on your laptop? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. We will be electing officers in accordance with policy 9121, which states the Board of Education shall elect from its members at the organizational meeting, a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary. The election of officers shall be in writing and the vote of each member shall be made available for public inspection within 48 hours and recorded in the meeting. The floor is now open for nominations for chair. Are there any nominations? Christina?
Yes, thank you. It was harsh. I'd like to nominate Kathleen Stowe for chair. As we know, Kathleen is starting her second term on the board and she would bring ex-significant experience to the role. She has served as vice chair for the past two years while also serving on policy governance and budget committees, and she's chaired both of those committees at various times. In addition, she's been the board liaison to Parks and Recreation and to the new Energy Management Commission. I might put my name wrong on that. She also led the board in the superintendent search when we hired Dr. Jones. Her detailed knowledge of how the board operates, particularly our policies and our budgets, would make her an effective chair from day one. And as a bonus, her three children are all currently at all school levels in our schools, which gives her some real-time, boots-on-the-ground information on what's transpiring in the schools.
Thank you. According to our rules, we need to nominate the second. Or is there any other nominations? Mr. Kelly?
I'd like to nominate myself. I have not prepared a speech. I'm really nice guy.
That is true. Okay, are there any other nominations for chair? Okay, hearing none, I'm closing nominations. Sorry, I'm closing the nomination for chair. Members, please record your votes on your Board of Ed divided casts and pass them back to me. Thank you. Kathleen Stowe, votes for Kathleen Stowe. Karen Kowalski votes for Kathleen Stowe. Laura Costin votes for Kathleen Stowe. Christina Dally votes for Kathleen Stowe. Jim Kelly votes for Joe Kelly. Cody Kittle votes for Joe Kelly. Michael Joseph McCarthy Anthony. Mike votes for Joe Kelly. Karen Hirsch votes for Kathleen Stowe. So Kathleen Stowe, five, Joe Kelly, three. You have a new chair. Congratulations, Ms. Stowe. Thank you so much, everyone. You forward us to where we go. Now that I have a background, I'm trying to follow the same script that you did for the next two positions. We'll be electing officers in accordance with policy 9121. Anyone if you mentioned it? Now, I went with more for vice chair.
Hi. I can nominate myself for vice chair. I think my experience on the board for the last two years and working alongside yourself and Stowe and the others, we can put forward a collaborative and challenging efforts to running a very focused, innovative board of 400 students that we serve.
Are there any other nominations? We'll all follow the same process. We record a vote on your Board of Ed divided cast and pass them back to me. Karen Hirsch votes for Karen Kowalski. Michael Joseph McCarthy Anthony votes for Karen Kowalski. Cody Kittle votes for Karen. Kathleen Stowe votes for Karen Kowalski. Christina Dally votes for Karen Kowalski. Karen Kowalski votes for Karen Kowalski. Laura Costin votes for Karen Kowalski. And Jim Kelly does not vote for the good team. Congratulations, Karen. You won 7-0-1. Thank you very much. And finally, we're going to do the last officer. And I suspect the person is, I think. So the floor is now open for the nomination for secretary.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stowe. I'd like to nominate Karen Hirsch to serve as secretary. Anyone who knows Karen appreciates her diligence in taking notes, researching matters, and following up. She's done an excellent job for the board in the past two years, and I believe we should have to continue to do so.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Karen Hirsch votes for Karen Hirsch. Michael Joseph McCarthy Anthony votes for Karen Hirsch. Cody Kittle votes for Karen Hirsch. Kathleen Stowe votes for Karen Hirsch. Karen Kowalski votes for Karen Hirsch. Laura Costin votes for Karen Hirsch. And Jim Kelly votes for Karen Hirsch. Congratulations, Karen. Okay, thanks, guys. Now let's get down to business. So with that, let's go straight, we're moving to our public hearing. And we get to hear first from our G E testee department, Tommy and Hobbie, right?
Good evening, Dr. Jones, members of the board, committee attendees. My name is Hobbie Sarah, and I'm senior class president at Grant School. Homecoming Week just came to a thunderous conclusion, literally, as it started to actually raining during Saturday's reporting. On Monday, students were all reminded of one of the few bright sides of virtual learning, doing class in our pajamas. Students rolled out of bed and came to class, this time in person, in their bathrobes, pajama pants, and slippers. Then on Tuesday, we hosted Decades Day, where outfits ranged from hippies to the six, of the 60s, to old-school rappers of the 2000s. Tuesday night, the gym was packed for our dodgeball tournament. Teams brought uniforms, coaches, and suits, and intensity. Marquee matchup of the night saw administrators get defeated by a team of students. On Western Wednesday, students trained in their dodgeballs for cowboy hats and boots to school. Then, on Senior Dress Up Day Thursday, there was an incredible range of costumes, with most notably non-precedented rate of participation. Finally, GHS showed off a red-and-white pride. On Friday night, over 500 students showed off their best semi-formal looks on the dance floor. The homecoming dance had a great turnout, especially amongst underclassmen, and it's a great opportunity for students to engage with their peers outside of the classroom. Unfortunately, there was no pep rally due to weather concerns on Friday, but regardless, the week was a smashing success. In my four years at GHS, this homecoming week saw the most participation enthusiasm yet. I'm hopeful that our renewed school spirit and sense of community will continue to grow, and student government is eager to continue to plant banks to facilitate this. I also want to give a thank you to Ms. Karen Coster, our director of student activities, for her integral role in planning these events. Right now, the class of 22 is hosting a fundraiser at Chipotle in Riverside. For those of you who are listening from home, please consider indulging in some guacamole, supporting our class using the code H E X six Y B F, or showing our flyer at the restaurant. The event ends at eight, so get those orders in. Another fundraising news, the junior class is currently hosting an Emma's Gourmet Popcorn fundraiser. The sophomore class is going to host a bake sale soon, and the freshman class is hosting a fundraiser on December 23 at Chicken Joe's. I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight, and I will now pass the microphone to our student body president, Tommy Block.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Jones, and members of the community. My name is Tommy Water, and I'm the GHS student president. I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight and consistently listening to our concerns and working towards effective solutions. As Hobbie mentioned, Homecoming Week was a great success, and seeing teachers and students alike passionately show off school spirit was truly refreshing as a student. Homecoming gives me hope that the culture of GHS is back on the rise. With many positive takeaways from October, there are also many additional opportunities to enhance the experience of students at Greenwich High School. As many of you know, traffic this year has been worse than ever. I mean, it is almost impossible to enter or leave GHS without spending at least half an hour turning on Hillside. This obstacle often leads to buses and kids who wait to school in the morning, which takes away time for teachers to teach. I think we all can agree that this has been a longstanding issue in the community, and I hope we can facilitate an open conversation about how to effectively fix it. Beyond the increased traffic, students have turned their attention to our upcoming return exam paper. Students and faculty have been having discussions on what midterm will look like if we're returning to a full and personal learning this year. Student government representatives shared recommendations with GHS administrators, questioning that teachers provide a review packet in every class that lists and gives examples of possible concepts and questions that could appear upon the test. Additionally, we are hopeful that there will be a cutoff for new course content to be introduced in each class, giving students enough time to submit final assignments and to prepare for the exam period. I'm grateful that our GHS administrators and teachers continue to solicit feedback, listen to our ideas, and support the emotional and social well-being of the student body. And finally, in consultation with administrators and faculty advisors, student government is planning to draft a district policy as to how social media can be safely used by club and senior organizations. Use of social media between clubs, student government, and students is imperative to keeping a connected and engaged community. For instance, the cardinal craziest bits of their approach is what we push information about sporting events and themes of the student section, which often yields great turnouts in student-supporting reviews on the page. We are aware, however, that certain trends on TikToks have led to challenges at the high school. There are both benefits and drawbacks to social media. Looking forward, we plan to create a common sense policy that gives students liberty to safely connect with their peers as school friends while outlining consequences for improperly taking advantage of this privilege. Thank you, as always, for providing coffee and a opportunity to speak at Board of Education meetings. And I look forward to seeing you all in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I've got a bit more to the traffic situation. So I'm so happy it bothers you guys just as much as it does me. Next, we have G E M. Well, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome our new board members. It's Crossley, Mr. McCarthy, Mrs. Kittle. And congratulations to Ms. Stowe as our chair, Ms. Kowalski as our AP, and Ms. Hirsch as our secretary. I'm here to talk about some systemic problems that we need to work on and continue to work on now. We have the opportunity to fix special education and our systemic failures. We have failed to meet the full needs of our students. In addition, we have failed to support the staff and faculty who work with these students. We must continue to address the failure to maintain and expand our facilities so that all students have access to playgrounds and safe buildings, flooding buildings, collapsing ceilings, and noncompliant buildings. Should not be how we describe our schools here in Greenwich. We must provide a workplace and educational space that is free from harassment and intimidation for our students and our members. These are some things that I hope we can work together on. I congratulate the new board members and the current board members. I look forward to working with you all. Next week is Thanksgiving. I want to thank the board for all the hours that they put in as volunteers. Thank our parents and our PTA for supporting our community, our students for always being there and trying to do their best. And I ask everyone to take a moment and think of something to be thankful for and pass it on. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Will. PTA Council. Mimi Duff, maybe on, is on? Okay.
Can you hear me? Yeah? You can? And yes? Okay, I don't, I'm not getting acknowledgement, but I'll carry on. I'm Mimi Duff, president of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of their members. With Thanksgiving around the corner, I'd like to start by saying thank you to the new Board of Ed, all of our district educators, administrators, and other staff, and all of my colleagues at PTAC. I'll start with a follow-up from the October meeting topics of achievement and enrollment. Regarding achievement, there are ongoing concerns about overall achievement even without the impact of COVID. We applaud the planned efforts to improve achievement, but we need to consider significant changes, not just tweaking. For example, SBA math results drop each year from third to fourth to fifth to usually sixth grades before bottoming out. The district needs to understand why and to address the issues. With the changes in standardized testing and the new implementation of the Big Ideas Math Program, have tracking metrics changed and what information can be provided on an early and often basis to see if things are improving? Regarding enrollment, while projections beyond five years are problematic, this is not a reason to not have plans for possible future scenarios. A Board of Ed members raise the desire, raise the desirability of having action plans for multiple scenarios. This type of planning should be investigated as part of the strategic plan. What has PTAC been up to? The October Board of Ed meeting was a long one, and as a result, the district ALP team didn't get to give their full presentation. Our PTAC ALP team has organized a redo, and that presentation will take place on November 23 at 10:00 a.m. It is open to all parents, and we have planned to record it so it can be added to the PTAC website. We continue to build a library of resources, both for future reference and for working parents that may not have flexibility during the school day. Yesterday, our Academic Excellence Team hosted a Data Date with Science seminar with Tara Fogel, our KDA8 Science Coordinator. That session was also recorded. We're also engaging with the district to have reps on a couple more textbook reviews this year. Thank you for including us in those important discussions. We also look forward to having ongoing representation in the SPED review implementation process. Our team has spent countless hours advocating for our SPED families, and we look forward to remaining part of the process to improve programs. We are also busy brainstorming with the district on how we might do a better job of recycling in schools, how we might literally lighten the load of the middle school backpacks, and how our DEI committee can optimally engage to best serve our increasingly diverse student body. Lastly, I want to address some comments that have percolated up to me. Some folks are saying parents' voices are being silenced, and they don't have access to training, and they don't want to volunteer as a result. From my perspective, our parents have never been more engaged. Board of Ed meetings have had record attendance, and this is one reason I want to advocate for continued Zoom access. Our school PTA slates are nearly full, and our PTAs are hard at work doing great things. PTAC has mandatory training, and we work collaboratively with individual PTAs and the district. We're here to advocate, communicate, and coordinate. If you are a community member looking to get more involved in an open collaborative way, we look forward to having you join the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi. Next up, we have our community comments. I'm looking at our list. We have two people have dropped, but we're at about 24. So we're close, because as you know, we only allow our public comment at the beginning of the meeting, but then, of course, we'll take more public comment after we get through our business. So if anyone goes under three minutes, maybe we can just get everybody in. So with that, I could go through all the policies, but I know everyone's going to be civil tonight. So let's just get started. First up is Jackie Holman.
Is she at home or she here?
We have three minutes. We have three minutes. Just wait for it. Congratulations and welcome to the new board members. I know I speak for many parents, and I say we're looking forward to developing a productive and successful working relationship with you. As you know, we have a few unresolved concerns we hope you'll consider sooner rather than later. First, we'd like you to address the comment made by Dr. Jones last month, when she denied that masks and vaccine mandates were tied to our SRS refunding application. You can hear for yourself in the video playback from the meeting. Around the 1 hour and 20-minute mark, Joe Kelly says, "Is any of that money tied to us having kids wear masks or vaccines?" Superintendent Jones immediately replies, "Absolutely not." However, the SRS application posted on the school website and submitted by Dr. Jones says the opposite. "If Greenwich takes the RBS refunding, universal mask-wearing and efforts to provide vaccinations to educator staff and students are required." Why did Dr. Jones lack candor about this in October? She's also using the money to fund controversial social-emotional learning programming to hire cell consultants and to hire staff to deliver cell content in addition to implementing wraparound health services inside schools. Who will foot the bill for these new position services when COVID funding drives up? Is the BET aware of this? In light of this information, a cautious course of action would be to pull the application. If we did, then presumably we could unmask our children, teachers, and administrators, who have thus far been used as pawns in order to obtain nearly $10 million in funding. Their medical freedom should not be a bargaining chip. And by the way, under what authority is the district blocking emails from individuals to the government? I tried to send an email to a board member, but the account I was using had been blocked. Is that normal? And did you know the results of the Freedom of Information Act request revealed that Dr. Jones had a nickname for me and that she had people spying on my whereabouts and recounting my activities to her? Do you know why she reported me to the police for harassment instead of investigating the complaint about my son's class? I'm grateful the police recognized the complaint, didn't reach anywhere near the level of harassment, but it marks the second time Dr. Jones tried unsuccessfully use police against me. I wonder if she's reported me to the FBI as a domestic terrorist, too. And why does Dr. Jones tell parents she was not promoting critical race theory? My son received a suggested reading list just this week containing a CRT classic stamped from controversial author Ibram X. Kendi. Is that reading list part of the approved curriculum? And if so, who approved the list? Also, please consider reminding teachers that the use of unapproved content is not permitted. That's not academic freedom. Rather, it's the board's legal obligation to approve all curriculum. And lastly, please do not allow Dr. Jones to throw a few rogue teachers under the bus when it is her responsibility to ensure she implements only the curriculum approved by you, the Board of Education. Our teachers should never bear the blame for the failings of their higher-ups, yet they are consistently blamed when problems arise, rather than administrators taking responsibility for allowing these things to happen in the first place. Thank you. I'll have to read the policies. Okay. All right. Would like to do it for all the speakers. Hopefully, we can draw up a better note than that. 93, 24, and 95, please try to be civil, and please try not to call people specifically. But thank you. Anyway, moving forward, we're going, I believe, Carl, your son, Jackie, you said was not going to speak this evening. So we're moving on to Anna LaBorde.
Hello, can you hear me? Hopefully, I'm being heard. Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Jones, members of Cabinet, GPS administrators, teachers, parents, and members of the community. My name is Anna LaBorde, and I'm here to give thanks. As VP of Curriculum for PTAC, I oversee the Academic Excellence, ALP, and Digital Learning Committees. As you can imagine, there has been a lot of work in those committees this year already, and I want to take a moment to express appreciation for both the GPS administrators and the parent volunteers who have been dedicated to the goals of creating greater transparency and communication around the GPS curriculum as well as promoting excellence and consistency. I want to thank Mark D'Amico, Tara Fogel, BJ Marcus, Mike Reed, Bonnie O'Regan, and Mike Ting for taking the time to meet with our committees and work towards our mutual goals. Back in the spring, Mark D'Amico reached out to the Academic Excellence Team and said, "Hey, let's meet over the summer. I have a brand-new team, and I want to talk about all..." I have a brand-new team, and I want to talk about all the work we want to do over the next year. And he wasn't kidding. Ever since we met in July, we've been working hand-in-hand, sharing questions and concerns, gathering and giving feedback, and providing support as the team implements new tools and avenues for communication, such as the website updates, newsletters, and presentations. I am incredibly thankful that I have gotten to work with this great group of people, both administrators and parents, and I feel privileged to be able to support the amazing work that they are all doing. The implementation update on Big Ideas is a wonderful example of the great work that's happening, and I want to congratulate Mike Reed for all of his hard work. Taking off my PTA hat, I want to say a few words as a parent of three students in Greenwich Public Schools, two at the International School at Dundee and one an eighth grader at Eastern Middle School. This is my ninth year as an ISD parent, and I feel privileged to have had all three of my kids attend ISD. I want to say thank you to Terry Ricky for her two decades of leadership in which she has created what is an absolute gem in GPS. I want to say thank you for every teacher whose classroom my children have had the privilege of sitting in at ISD, from the homeroom to the art room to the music room, to the gym, to the media center, to the resource room. I want to say thank you to all ISD teachers for their perseverance, perseverance, and grit navigating the past two difficult years. Thank you for keeping my kids smiling and learning, for getting to know who they are as a person and as a learner, and knowing how to challenge and inspire them. I also want to say thank you to the teachers and staff at Eastern Middle School. Though this is confusing, this has been a confusing and difficult time, the teachers at EMS have been inspiring and challenging their students while also listening and caring. Thank you. And from the mouth of my eighth grader, a very special shout-out to Mrs. Fergus for being especially awesome today. And finally, thank you to the returning and the new members of the Board of Education for your dedication to education in Greenwich. And thank you, Dr. Jones, for all that you do. Good night.
Good night. Thank you very much. Next up is Danielle Izzo. They're here online.
I do not see Mr. Izzo online.
Okay, well, we can always come back if you're online later. All right, next up is David Alfa. He's here online. I don't see him online.
He is online. Mr. Alfa, you may begin.
My name is David Alfa. I've been a resident of Greenwich for over fifty years and a business owner in town for the past twenty-seven years. As a taxpayer and a parent, I have a financial vested interest in our schools, the school system, and the well-being of the students in town. I want to thank the Board of Education with the opportunity to speak tonight. Congratulate the new members. It's my understanding that any policies and procedures, as far as masking our students and promoting of the vaccine pop-up clinics on school grounds, have been approved by this board. My request is that the board discusses and votes to remove the mask mandate for all and the vaccine mandates for all employees and soon-to-be mandates for students. Pop-up vaccine clinics do not belong on school grounds. This makes the school liable should there be a vaccine injury, a data breach of sensitive medical records, or the inevitable claim of violation under FERPA. These policies may have made sense to you before, but should not any longer. Continuing on this path is a mistake and will cost the town of Greenwich monetarily and possibly its bond rating. More importantly, maybe a life. What I, what I'm unsure of is can a grieving parent sue the board members in civil court? Instead of mandates, offer choice. Let the parents decide for their own children when it comes to masking, and let the educators decide if they want to get the vaccine. When the board gives employees and parents choice, the board is no longer responsible for any ill effects of the masks or the highly ineffective vaccines. Not my words, but the CDC Director, Dr. Rochelle Walensky. The drug companies, as well as the governor, who mandated this cannot be held liable. The governor left it up to the school districts, and the board voted to implement these policies. This is Wolf Blitzer and Dr. Rochelle Walensky.
But what about all the fully vaccinated people who get the breakthrough infection? Can they pass it on? Could they pass it on to their children? Could they pass the virus on to older people, especially more vulnerable people with underlying health conditions?
Our vaccines are working exceptionally well. They continue to work well for Delta with the participle. But what they can't do anymore is prevent transmission.
Recently, I learned that seventeen educators were fully vaccinated contracted COVID. Those are breakthrough cases. That means those who are fully vaccinated can still contract COVID, and they can still die from COVID. You just heard this from the CDC Director. This matters because we are currently forcing our unvaccinated educators to test whether they have symptoms or not. Testing for an illness that they have no symptoms for makes no sense to me. This feels like discrimination. All board members should understand that the decisions you have made or are going to make have consequences. Do the right thing. Vote on this tonight. Vote for choice. Those that vote to continue these policies will not just be exposing the town to potential liability, but endangering our children and wonderful personnel. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Greg, Greg Paganino. Are you online or not? There you are, Greg. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Board of Education for talking to me to speak. And just the board. We've just gone through an election where the four winners pledged to work together and end a decade-long dysfunctionality in the BOE. Please don't disappoint the community. Unfortunately, we've seen a politicized board provide a deteriorating system. We ask you that you work with the first selectmen in the BET to present a workable school plan with clear priorities. And if CMS is really about collapse, then make that a priority. The BET is promised to work with the BOE and invest in our school system. Please hold until that. Please use the energy which has been used and directed to useless personal attacks and picks our schools. Our own Riverside Elementary has declined in rankings over the past few years from sixth in the state to thirty-sixth since our sons have graduated. While this is happening, the BOE seems more focused on personal incriminations and attacks. The community needs a better school system with elected officials, with community first, and personal ideology lost. I beg you to deliver. My son will be out of the system before anything you do will impact my family. But our love for Greenwich is such that we want him to thrive for centuries. And I would just comment, and I would ask you to ignore the radical minority which shows up every meeting. Nothing they said is actually grounded in law. And as government agencies, you're not liable for anything related.
So I had a speech prepared, but I was asked to read something anonymously from a GPS teacher. Did you know, did you know there is a divide among students that are being vaccinated and those who are not? Students announce their status at school, causing conflict among peers. Friends are being lost. Families make decisions for their own reasons, and social, emotional learning teaches us to respect these choices. Yet there is no SEL for the divide that has been created over the vaccination in our schools. There's no reason no one should think less of another because of their vaccination status. Teachers are expected to teach tolerance for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Where is the SEL on medical choice and freedom? In several emails to staff, Tony Jones stated, May seventh, two thousand twenty-one, as required by law, it is a privacy matter, and there is no obligation to tell a parent if a teacher or staff member is vaccinated. And in that same vein, we are not allowed to ask students who is and who is not vaccinated. May twelfth, as we've shared before, the vaccine is an optional private decision for individuals and families. And as required by law, it is a privacy matter, and there is no obligation to share, as well as no right to ask if a student or staff member is vaccinated. May fourteenth, obtaining the vaccine is a private family decision. Yet privacy is not being followed by GPS staff and students. Did you know that there are unvaccinated teachers eating lunch in their cars or alone in their classrooms instead of in our faculty room, socializing and collaborating with colleagues for fear of discrimination? Yet twenty-plus students are eating unmasked in classroom-sized makeshift cafeterias throughout the district. Did you know that GPS parents are being discriminated against? They are not able to volunteer in our schools, join school functions, or chaperone field trips unless vaccinated. A negative COVID test result has not been given as an option for volunteering. Did you know that there are teachers going to administrators requesting that not to work with unvaccinated colleagues? Did you know this is discrimination? Did you know there are teachers, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, paying out of pocket for COVID testing? Did you know that every day there are vaccinated teachers testing positive for COVID? The vaccinated are testing positive, and the unvaccinated are testing negative. Did you know that there are teachers who do not want to get the ethylene oxide laced swab for COVID testing and are driving three hours plus each week to get a saliva test? Teachers are getting sick after repeated nasal swabs, including headaches, bloody noses, and sinus issues.
Thirty seconds.
Did you know that teachers are being kicked out of classes because their negative test results have not come in on time? Something that is out of teacher's control. In addition, when this occurs, teachers are losing pay because of test mandate when they are not sick. Administrations and scrambling to find substitute teachers to cover classes. Did you know this impacts students' learning? Our contract states a need for good faith, yet teachers who have been getting weekly testing for seven weeks are not being trusted. The medical facilities do not follow through with their testing turnaround times. Once again, did you know that we do not have private free saliva testing for staff in the Greenwich?
If you have more comments, please go for the email.
Even though this has been requested since August.
Next up is Megan Galetta.
When I should have said Stephanie Kelly was listed to speak, but she was asked to pick up.
I as well had a separate speech tonight, but a teacher had approached me from Greenwich High School and asked that I read this tonight, which was definitely more important. Good evening. Over twenty years
Thank you.
Good evening. Over twenty years ago, my student taught at Greenwich High School and was hired by GPS the following year. My experience of Greenwich Public Schools is that it's an exceptional school system. I have taught exclusively at Greenwich High School and have envisioned retiring from the district one day with fond memories of my love of teaching my students and the many colleagues who have become friends. Unfortunately, those dreams have recently been taken away from me and have been replaced with frustrations over COVID testing, fears over potential job loss, and heartbreaking discrimination among colleagues due to the vaccine mandate. Colleagues that I've been friends with all of these years have stated they do not want to work closely with me because I am unvaccinated. I have also been told that the unvaccinated have contributed to the increase in COVID cases. Not only is this scientifically incorrect, it is discriminatory. By the way, I tested positive for COVID last year, and I have the antibodies. You are segregating the vaccinated from the unvaccinated. This is outright unjust. It is causing the unhealthy and hostile work environment. Having to physically and publicly hand in my test results every Monday makes me feel like an outcast. According to Dr. Jones and several emails to parents and staff, this should not, this should be a private matter. How could this possibly be considered private? Everyone knows who is being tested because the district has not fought for our privacy. We cannot just email our negative results because that would be way too easy. Or is it because fringes on being illegal and a violation of our medical privacy? Moving on to the testing sites, which are supposed to be free and accessible. There are no spit tests in Greenwich, so you expect unvaccinated teachers to test weekly without having a location nearby? I travel hours on my own time to test for a mandate when I am not sick. I have wasted hours running to testing sites on your suggested list to find that they are shut down with no warning. Just so you know, these facilities are closed over the weekend. If results are not on time due to unforeseen error by Friday, no one can be reached to comply with the mandate on time. Please, please take this into consideration. So why am I angry and upset? I'm recently told to leave my job without pay because I did not have my test results on Monday due to no fault of my own. The testing site misspelled my name and sent the results to someone else. My students' learning was disrupted and placed on hold because I did not have a piece of paper in my hand. What a disgrace.
Thank you very much. Kara Fogan. Up next is Kara Fogan.
Before I speak to the fact that taxpayers want the advanced learning program reinstated immediately, curriculum to stay with the Board of Education, and want the new BOE to terminate the adoption of the Generic Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Policies and return to the carefully crafted local BOE policies specific to Greenwich's high standard for equality education. I first would like to thank the talented team of women who inspired and supported me throughout my campaign and the inspirational people I met campaigning in our communities for the past month and a half. It was an amazing, I'd also like to thank my voters who believed in me. It was an amazing journey with great conversation. Remarkably, almost everyone I spoke with did not want to reimagine or transform Greenwich Public Schools. Instead, the community wants to raise the bar of excellence back to transform Greenwich Public Schools, back to the Greenwich high standards over state standards, and go back to quality academics. Parents want strong foundations in reading, writing, grammar, history, math, and science, not social responsibility, lenses, perspectives, and biases. Parents want a reduction in screen time, less reliance on online resources, and a reparted prioritization of live teacher instruction over non-academic programs and technology. The community has spoken, and the priority for the new BOE is restoring Greenwich's historical excellence and academic spot, immediately bringing back local decision-making instead of following the new generic CAPE policies, leading the BOB back to proper governance and holding the superintendent accountable for prioritized quality academics, safe infrastructure, and partnering with parents in hosting town halls and Q and A forums, preventing personal opinions from being taught in the classroom as fact, and require the classroom to be free of judgment for students to share their individual ideas in all contexts, all contexts with impact on grades, without impact on grades, putting parents in charge of deciding whether to opt into K through twelve social emotional learning, health surveys, camera round surveys, content that features politics, sex, identity, or violent topics, and other controversial programming. Reinstating a valid measurement, not RAS kids, as is used now to identify struggling readers, to identify early intervention needs. Ensure intervention students are learning multiple goals, not one every six to eight weeks, and using foundations K through three to close the achievement gap. All evaluations for special ed do a deep dive in the area of struggle to properly identify students, and interventions and services do not occur during core academics. As it now stands now, curriculum changes to our existing programs like our advanced learning program or new pilot programs are occurring without community or BOE knowledge review input or approval. In fact, there is a total failure of governance.
Thanks, Kara. She's coming down.
Good evening. I'm Colleen Alfano. I'm a thirty-year resident and teacher and counselor in Greenwich. I come to you tonight to ask, to beg for your help in getting an easily accessible weekly COVID saliva test for employees. Many of the almost two hundred employees who are required to test weekly do not want to use the invasive nasal swab, which is sterilized with ethylene oxide, a known carcinogen that causes allergic reactions and nosebleeds and headaches when used weekly, week after week. These folks are testing weekly in good faith, which actually makes them less of a risk than the vaccinated. These are caring, hard-working people who are complying with the COVID mandates while trying to be true to themselves. Why should they be discriminated against? Spitting in a vial and getting the results is reliable, quick, and easy. But currently, the most accessible saliva test for Greenwich employees is in Merritt. It takes over three hours round trip on the Merritt Parkway in evening rush hour traffic. Three hours. Winter is coming. That kind of drive is fatiguing and dangerous. Is that what you want through your teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, custodians, administrators, and bus drivers, week after week with no end in sight? In the Merritt, any teacher or student can pick up the saliva test on a Wednesday, bring it back on Thursday, and get the results on Friday. In Ellington, Connecticut, they have arranged for an urgent care facility to come to the schools and collect saliva samples weekly. Stanford is working in conjunction with Yale Diagnostics and Stanford Pathology to provide weekly saliva tests for their police and firefighters at their stations. What is the problem? Why can't this happen in Greenwich? We have been researching and asking for help with this issue since August, and nothing has happened. When teachers have to focus their time and attention on having basic needs met or avoiding a negative experience, it is impossible to fully concentrate on the lessons, their students, and their jobs. Please help us get back to the business of teaching by making the saliva test easily accessible for Greenwich employees. It's simple. On November second, we spent valuable hours in professional learning groups getting trained in universal design of learnings and discussing how we can make our lessons easily accessible to everyone intentionally and by design. There are three main UDL concepts here that are highly relevant that I hope that you will consider. Teachers were told to, one, optimize individual choice and autonomy. Two, personalize and contextualize lessons. And three, minimize threats and distractions. Please, can we practice what we preach?
Time.
Please, if you're interested in learning more, please email Concern Teachers of Greenwich at gmail.com. Up next. Please, would you like to move on for everyone? Next up is Kathleen Weinstein. Weinstein, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Weinstein, and I have been a Connecticut public educator for thirty years. After the October twenty-first Board of Education meeting I attended, I wrote a letter to the editors of the Greenwich Times, the Sentinel, and the Greenwich Free Press. I left that meeting feeling defeated and worried. However, the response to my letter was enlightening. I am no longer sad. There were other letters that we get responding to my own, and you know what? I was set straight. My hypothesis was inaccurate, as was stated. My hypothesis was that the public regard for teachers and education had changed for the worse. I was worried, but I was wrong. What I found out was that this false rhetoric and circus behavior is not the norm in our community. I heard from a myriad of parents, colleagues, friends, and neighbors who wholeheartedly disagree with the sentiments and outright falsehoods you've heard here time and time again. So I've decided to be a role model for both my own kids and perhaps your kids, my students. When something is not right, stand up, be brave, and to quote R G B, speak your mind even if your voice shakes. They should know that they need to stand up, but there is a right way and a wrong way to do it. You don't get your way with public bullying, name-calling, lying, and yelling. You persuade people by creating sound arguments based in fact. I'm not representing anyone tonight. I'm here as one teacher and a parent in the Greenwich Public Schools. And I want you, the board, to know that there are many voices in support of you and your policies as well as your teaching and administrative staff. I implore you to look past the circus, hear beyond the noise, and continue to make sound educational decisions based in fact with goodwill and decorum. Follow your hearts, your minds, your experience, and rely on the educational experience of many to guide you. Resist the urge to let the abhorrent behavior of some color your decisions for all. From my perspective, I think we're all advocating for the same thing, a clear and transparent curriculum. Some want it so that they can control the conversations that happen in classrooms. Others, like me, want it to protect ourselves from the circus. I want my colleagues, friends, and parents, and even my students to know that if you feel strongly, you should speak up too, even if your voice shakes. You don't have to be big or loud or aggressive. You just have to be confident, and like every teacher will tell you, do your homework. Get your facts in order and speak from your heart. Then you'll be heard above the noise. Thank you for your time.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Frances Lunobe, today speaking as a mom of North Street and Central Middle School kids. It's pandemic year three, and while life is feeling a little more normal, we're still in it, aren't we? In times of stress, what skills do we as adults and moreover our students use? A report released this week by the ACT and the American School Counselors Association shared that counselors selected three skills. One, demonstrating effective coping skills when faced with a problem. Two, exhibiting self-discipline and self-control. And three, applying self-motivation and self-direction to learning as among both the top five most critical skills to learn and the most difficult for kids to learn. I see lawn signs and hear demands for academics, curriculum, and transparency. As a kid who is pushed to perform and a mom of high performers, I understand this focus and attention. That said, I say that the skills that will be needed for life will be the curiosity, the tenacity, the resilience, to persevere through the learning of sight words, math facts, grammar rules, and close reading. Our beloved teachers share and model a love of learning and the power of perseverance. For this gift and ability to teach, I say thank you. Just this week, I prayed to Jesus, Buddha, Yahweh, a higher power, as my little had back-to-back math worksheet meltdowns. In the end, was it mommy or her sibling rooted her on and got her back on track? Or was it her fourth-grade teacher, brand-new to North Street School, who I asked for help, who got my little to math confidence? And a girl who had a big smile, not tears, today as she said, mommy, I got an eighty-eight on my math test. Each and every day, our GPS teachers are building our future leaders. For you, I say, stay focused on your unique gifts, your joy, and purpose. In Edutopia this week, there was an article on why teachers stay. Because you are our sunshine. We love you. Stay strong. And thank you for teaching academics and curriculum with transparent love, affection, curiosity, and resilience. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Frances. Up next is Janet McMahon. I think she's online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Janet McMahon, and I speak tonight as a parent of two Greenwich Public School children. Next week is Thanksgiving, and in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I would like to offer some words of appreciation, gratitude, and thanks. Thank you to all of the GPS teachers, administrators, and staff, and especially Dr. Jones, who have worked so tirelessly under extraordinary circumstances for almost two years to keep our doors open for in-person schooling. We must not take for granted that our district is but one of a very small handful of schools in the state and region that remained open continuously since September two thousand twenty. For almost fourteen months, Dr. Jones and her team have kept our children safe and healthy through science-based COVID mitigation strategies and protocols. We must also not take for granted that schools are still closing today. So thank you all for erring on the side of caution so that we may continue to receive the privilege of in-person learning as we methodically transition toward pre-pandemic times. Thank you for coordinating efforts with the Connecticut Department of Public Health to bring free and convenient walk-in vaccination clinics to our community. Thank you for recognizing this public health crisis and granting our residents access to vaccinations. After being shut out of a number of vaccine appointments last week, I took my nine-year-old to the extremely efficiently-run walk-in clinic at Hamilton Avenue School on Sunday. Thanks to this clinic, she was one of hundreds of very happy and relieved five-to-eleven-year-olds who received her very first dose of the Pfizer vaccine. Thank you for providing this valuable and important service to Greenwich. Thank you for supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as social emotional learning in the classroom. These concepts have been gruesomely politicized at Board of Education meetings lately, but what does it actually look like? Well, it looks like North Street School celebrating Native American Heritage Month by hosting an assembly with the Thunderbird American Indian dancers who share their beautiful traditional music and dance. It looks like anxious Central Middle Schoolers practicing mindful Mondays during advisor base. Our children are finally being taught to prioritize their mental health through yoga, deep breathing, and other relaxation techniques. Finally, thank you to all of the members of the Board of Education. As elected officials and public servants, we place our faith and our votes in you. Please continue to keep the best interests of our children in mind as you make policy, budgetary, and curriculum decisions. Please continue to advocate for the most vulnerable in our district, English language learners, free and reduced lunch recipients, and special needs children with disabilities both seen and unseen. The GPS community appreciates you and thanks you for your unwavering dedication. Happy Thanksgiving.
Need water? Thank you, John.
Good evening. Especially enjoy the cat calls in the back. It's great. Good evening, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education and fellow residents. My name is James Waters, and I'm excited to work with you as a member of the RTM District Twelve. Tonight, I'd like to offer my congratulations to our newly-elected members, the four of you, Kathleen Stowe, Laura Costin, Michael Joseph Mercanti Anthony, and Cody Kittle. You guys were the pro-school people's choice to help lead our schools for the next four years. It was a great outcome for our town, even if still some still don't understand that it's over. You were chosen because of the unique perspectives and expertise you bring to this board and our town's desire to move forward to solve the challenges facing our schools. And our schools certainly face challenges. I think we're all aware of five big ones. Warning signs about academic performance in the wake of COVID- nineteen. Crumbling and outdated school buildings after decades of neglect. Getting our special education programs back on track. Managing learning methods, materials, and objectives in increasingly digital, connected, and transparent world. And five, managing enrollment trends, while it seems like we still need the same number of classrooms and teachers and have schools that must be rebuilt. Despite our nation-leading success in keeping our schools open since last September, these challenges are going to require consistent diligent attention for several years. We won't be able to address them if this board takes its eye off the ball or is riddled with partisanship. Fortunately, the path forward on each of these items is now more clear than ever. Five years ago, none of us had a clue what twenty twenty-one would look like, or exactly how much work our school buildings needed. Five years ago, we had a revolving door of superintendents driven away, at least in part, by certain former members of this board. Now you're in a much better place. You have new blood, volumes of data and plans, and strong new leaders in place to leverage. This board has work to do. But if you pledge to work collaboratively and in good faith and bring your ideas to the table, I'm convinced you can debate them, solve challenges, and find the grand bargains you'll need. To that end, please encourage the public to bring their ideas to the table to help you. Debate these ideas, but please avoid wasting even a second
Thirty seconds.
on the small minority trying to distract you with personal gripes, conspiracy theories, dark rabbit holes to nowhere, and fake science. Focus on the vast majority of residents who elected you are comfortably going about their lives tonight because they trust that you will do what they elected to do. Do whatever you must to get started on critical renovations of Old Greenwich, J C, and Central, and demonstrate that you can work across party lines to get a strategic plan in place to drive excellence.
Time. Thank you. Maybe online?
I am not seeing her online.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. I'd like to start by mentioning some laws and mandates that our country wants observed. In seventeen sixty-nine, I'm sorry, in seventeen sixty-nine, a law stated that the legal existence of a woman was suspended upon marriage. The Fugitive Slave Act of eighteen fifty legalized the capturing and returning of runaway slaves to their bondage. The Jim Crow laws of the eighteen sixties segregated Black people from certain public areas. The Smith Act of nineteen forty, the Alien Registration Act, Public Law five oh three, Japanese internment, weak leaders, all followed these laws. Since trusting the science is all the rage in twenty twenty-one, I'll mention the eugenics sterilization mandate of the early parts of the last century. I'll also remind you all, when it comes to trusting the science, that lobotomies were still legal little more than fifty years ago. It's time we all start viewing mandates with a discerning and more educated eye, a more logical mind, and a much, much more brave heart and spirit. The laws I mentioned have changed because brave people refused to follow them and removed leaders that did. I request that our logical, moral, and ethical obligation to our children come far before the state, where our children deserve to be prioritized. Recently, I spoke with many teachers in our Greenwich Public Schools, teachers working in terror, teachers being mistreated, marginalized, threatened, and dehumanized. I was a teacher for fifteen years. This is shocking to me. I spoke with one teacher that called me crying from her closet in her classroom. Whose idea was it to force teachers that do not want to be vaccinated to drive three hours each weekend to a specific testing site? I'd let testing labs set up in Greenwich so that these teachers will no longer be inconvenienced for their medical choices to spend three hours of their precious weekends driving to get tested. Whose idea was it to force teachers to walk their test results down to the school nurse on Monday mornings to purposely expose the identities of those who are not vaccinated? This senseless and abusive rule defies medical privacy and is purposely encouraging judgment, discord, bullying, and conflict among staff members. It is. It makes no sense at all. It's cruel. I ask that teachers be allowed to email their results in privacy to the nurse. Perfectly healthy teachers have been interrupted during, in the middle of their lessons, and have been escorted out of
Thirty seconds.
a school property over testing submission errors in front of their students. This is humiliating. This is madness. I have more to say, but I'll sum it up quickly. If you are a teacher, please reach out. This is not normal treatment. On the back of my, I have an email on my back right now. Please email it. It is the Concern Teachers of Greenwich at protonmail.com. The parents of Greenwich are behind you.
Thank you.
And we're here for you. Please reach out.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I am speaking to address the issue of safety from intimidation and harassment for our teachers and our students. Last month, over two hundred teachers attended the board meeting, either in person or virtually, to ask for your help. We ask for you to address the harassment, intimidation, and verbal attacks on your teachers by a select group of voices in the community. During the last board meeting, a community member equated your staff to Nazis, calling us brown shirts. Yet despite a few uncomfortable looks from the board, no one stopped or called out this hateful and disturbing reference. As a Jewish woman, I cannot sit by while historical facts and history are twisted to promote personal gain. While a person dishonors my heritage, my ancestors, and countless family members of the six million Jews who are victims of genocide by equating Jews being marched into gas chambers to students being asked to wear masks on governors' mandates due to public safety. I sat in that meeting as another speaker yelled towards teachers in the audience, then passed around personal information, and still the board took no action to stop the intimidation and hateful speech. The Board of Ed and the administration knew of the polarizing viewpoints within the community leading up to the election day, and yet did nothing in advance to prepare our schools to ensure safety for our staff members who were completing professional learning. Poll workers left the polling areas and walked and walked around the buildings where staff were attending meetings. Teachers' cars were damaged by non-faculty drivers, but the Teachers' cars were damaged by non-faculty drivers, but the biggest concern was a lack of police presence. At Riverside, staff members were heckled and verbally accosted as they tried to enter the building to complete their professional learning. Ahead of this day, a quarter of your teaching staff came out to ask for your help in ensuring their safety, and still you have done nothing. This past Friday, a parent used their children to help them pass out flyers to elementary school students at Riverside. Students who are between the ages of four to 10 that stated that schools are conducting medical procedures, quote, "not only targeting teachers now, but students." This is crossing a line. Students are being targeted and their safety should be the main concern of this board. How far will you let this continue before you begin to take action? Your teachers are on overdrive trying to implement new curriculum, fill in learning gaps left from the pandemic, and to care for the mental and physical well-being of all of our students. We ask for you to ensure that we can do our jobs without fear of attacks, slander, intimidation, and harassment. Former Chairperson Bernstein opened up each public comment session with a reminder for speakers to be respectful and model the types of norms we expect our children to follow. But I now ask you, what are you modeling for our students? When you sit for months and you allow your staff members and now your students to be intimidated and intact and continue to stay silent? Your silence and inaction models to our children, your students, and the community that when someone is being attacked, it's okay to do nothing, to say nothing.
Jill Ernst, I'm sorry if I'm saying it wrong, B-R-N-S-T.
Hi, sorry about that. My name is Jill Ernst and I am the Julian Curtis PTA co-president. I have three daughters in the third grade who came in through the magnet program and another daughter to enter kindergarten at J.C. next September. To state that I have an invested interest in Julian Curtis is an understatement. I will be spending a total of 10 years as part of this community. In addition to being a mom and PTA president, I am also a marketing executive who has worked in the K-12 educational publishing space for over 20 years. I pride myself with understanding how school districts function throughout the country. What I was not prepared for when moving to and enrolling my children in a school district which obviously invests in their curriculum and teachers, but is extremely short-sighted in terms of their school's infrastructure. Our J.C. community was blindsided last year when what we thought was a no-brainer renovation plan was attacked politically. We were told we had a wish list of grandiose ideas for a school with declining enrollment. But what is unrealistic about expecting my children to attend a school that does not resemble the one I attended over 35 years ago? Every bit of space in J.C. is utilized. My children are in classrooms with 21 classmates. They eat lunch in the gym because their cafeteria cannot accommodate all the kids while maintaining social distancing. Our school is not ADA compliant, it is lacking security, and does not have the advantages of some of the other elementary schools in the district with science labs. Free schools again are not a nice-to-have. Real estate development in Central Greenwich is on the rise and attracting young families. These families expect to have a centrally located public pre-K program that their children can attend and transition to for their elementary years. We cannot delay the J.C. renovation project any longer. All our schools in need should feel confident that they are in line to get the money for renovations our children deserve. Thank you for your time.
Next is Jess Enright Polanish.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent Jones. My name is Jess Enright Polanish, and along with Lisa Small, we are the co-chairs of PTA Council's Academic Excellence Committee. Our committee's goals are to advocate for excellence in the GPS curriculum and to facilitate communication between the district, schools, teachers, and parents. In our roles as A.E. co-chairs, the past few months have been very busy with many issues pertaining to curriculum in the district. We've had numerous meetings and an increased level of communication with Mark D'Amico and our wonderful new curriculum coordinators, Tara Fogel, Mike Reed, and Benjamin Marcus. We are participating as parent representatives in multiple curriculum advisory committees, specifically the Middle School E.L.A. and Social Studies Committees, as well as the GHS Math Textbook Advisory Committee. As we are not just a P.A., a Parent Association, but rather a P.T.A., a Parent Teacher Association, we have also met with the new G.E.A. President Lillian Perone, as we did last year with Carol Sutton. We have also met with our A.E. Committee, which is comprised of parent representatives from all 15 schools. Our mandate from them continues to be clear: Parents want consistency, transparency, and excellence. Which brings us to tonight. Tonight, we speak in support of our GPS teachers because there is no academic excellence without excellent teachers. Over the past two years, our teachers were asked to perform the brave and Herculean task of teaching our children during a global pandemic. In an instant, they needed to change the way they teach and adjust to a new, ever-changing COVID environment. This was not easy for our teachers professionally, emotionally, or physically. And yet they adapted and responded because they are dedicated professionals. Over the last several months, some teachers have felt increasingly underappreciated and demoralized. These teachers feel threatened in terms of instructional choices and teaching styles. They are not experiencing as much joy as they had in years past. They do not feel respected. While some of these feelings may be due to the larger landscape in America, our A.E. Committee is nonetheless concerned about our own teachers in our own town. Specifically, we are concerned with our district's need to retain and attract excellent teachers. We want Greenwich Public School teachers to feel valued, appreciated, and trusted. We want our teachers to receive the public and professional respect they deserve. We look forward to our continued conversations with the GPS Administration, with G.E.A., and with our parent representatives and PTA. In closing, we want to say loud and clear, thank you to our 900 teachers in our district. We are grateful for you, we value you, and we appreciate everything you do for our children each and every day.
We can always bring it back at this time after. Alright, thank you. Next up, Kathleen, you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Thank you.
Okay, good evening and a very warm welcome to our new Board of Ed members. Also, many thanks to our returning Board of Ed members for their continued service. I'd like to start by saying tonight that I'm speaking not in my official PTA capacity, but as an individual parent of three students. In anticipation of the Big Ideas Math presentation that is on the agenda this evening, I would like to briefly draw attention to Middle School Pathway Number Three, which seems to describe an option for students to move to Algebra II. I wanted to take a moment to commend Mr. D'Amico and Mr. Reed for including that option and for recognizing the needs of our most accelerated learners, a number that continues to grow each year. Currently, many of these students use Johns Hopkins Program as a form of acceleration beyond their grade, both within elementary and middle schools. While it is wonderful that our district seeks to meet the needs of these gifted learners through this program, the Johns Hopkins Program has a number of flaws, and parents in the past have expressed frustration with the disconnected nature of the program and the lack of live, direct instruction. With that in mind, I would ask that discussion and consideration be given tonight regarding offering a formalized GPS teacher-taught curriculum for Algebra II honors in middle school. Additionally, I would ask that consideration be given to students currently in elementary school using the Johns Hopkins Program to instead participate in district GPS classes, possibly in a virtual capacity. Fluidity amongst grades based on ability should also be considered as much as possible. If our past history of remote learning has taught us anything, it is that students benefit from having a live teacher. Beyond this, I would also suggest, as another big idea, the collaboration of the different disciplines to offer STEM-based and applied mathematics classes at the middle school level, such as STEMinar, Statistics, and Computer Science. Many thanks in advance for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Noel Moore.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can. Go ahead, Noel.
Hello, my name is Noel Moore. I've lived in Greenwich for 10 years and have three sons in the Greenwich Public Schools, a sixth grader at Eastern and two fourth graders at I.S.D. I want to start by thanking Dr. Jones and all of the teachers, administrators, and support staff in our school. My family appreciates all that you do, and we know that at times it can be a thankless job. During the start of the pandemic, remote school was not easy, but thanks to the hard work of Dr. Jones and the V.O.E., my kids were back in school full-time starting in the fall of 2020. My nephews in Oregon were remote through this past April of 2021, so I know that things could have been much worse. Over the past year, I've seen signs pop up around Greenwich saying things like "unmask our kids" or "medical procedures don't belong in schools." I want you to know that based on the parents I've talked to, these opinions are in the minority. I have two requests: one is for Dr. Jones and the V.O.E., and one for my fellow parents in Greenwich residents. For Dr. Jones and the V.O.E., please keep following the science. Many years ago, I was a biology major in college, and one thing that has stuck with me is how scientific discovery works. Scientists make hypotheses and then conduct experiments to test them. Based on the results of these experiments, they modify their hypotheses, run more experiments, and ask other scientists to try to replicate to see if they achieve the same results. When COVID hit, we didn't know much about how it spread or how to treat it. But 22 months later, thanks to the work of scientists, we know a lot more. We know that masks work and that vaccines save lives. My second request is for all of my fellow residents of Greenwich. I ask you to follow the golden rule: Let's think about what's best for our community, not just what we want. I personally don't like wearing a mask when I'm out and about, but I care about others. Wearing a mask is more about protecting others than protecting myself, and that is something I am happy to do. But I want to get to a point where we don't need to wear masks to keep each other safe. And in order to do that, we need to get to herd immunity, and that is going to require vaccinations. Everyone who is eligible to get vaccinated should get vaccinated so that those who are unable to get vaccinated can feel safe. My children are all under 12, and until two weeks ago, we were not able to get them vaccinated. Like all kids, they are not fans of shots, but I was so proud of them that they didn't argue at all when we took them to get vaccinated. In a little over a week, they'll get their second vaccination, and they should be fully protected by winter break. Although we didn't take advantage of one of the vaccination clinics in the Greenwich schools, I applaud the Greenwich School District in making vaccines available in schools. I would encourage expanding the hours to during school so that students could get vaccinated by bringing in a signed permission slip. And I truly hope that by next year, the COVID vaccine joins the list of other vaccinations that are required in order to attend school in Connecticut. Again, I want to thank you for all that you do. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Noel. Up next is Keith Steinberg. This will be the last one. We'll hit the hour mark if we can. Of course, you're welcome to stay afterwards if you're on with us.
How are you tonight? My name is Keith Steinberg, and this is our second year at North Mayanis. We have found the administration teachers and the support staff to be extremely responsive, and they've exceeded all of our expectations. My wife and I are pleased with our son's progress, both academically and socially. The services he receives have drastically improved his ability and desire to communicate with others. This is why we are concerned that the COVID vaccine will be mandated, and we will have to pull him out of school. I'm not willing to put my child's long-term health at risk for him to attend school, even if it is a great school. When he had COVID last year, we thought it was a cold and tested him just to be safe. We never imagined that his runny nose and sore throat could be due to a deadly disease that was discussed nonstop in the media. He was sick for a day. Not a single person caught it from him at home or in his class. The vaccine may be safe for some children, but it may not be safe for others. There's been no long-term testing done on children. Children are not dying from this disease or even getting seriously ill, and they are not spreading it. Although it is understood that the childhood vaccine schedule was mandated at a state level, each district can decide how lenient to be with exemptions. We ask you not to force a permanent medical procedure on the children with the consequence of refusal being denied educational services. We all have to deal with the mandates, and we discuss the science. If COVID is such a threat to our lives, then the million recent southern border crossers would be required to show their vaccine status. But they are not. Nurses are being fired for refusing this vaccine. This board cannot cosign and enforce a medical procedure as public policy on people and then banish the people for having different medical opinions. This is a subjugation of society. Every healthy child should be granted an exemption if their parents choose so. Just as the residents of Greenwich are coming to the Board of Education to plead for health and safety of our children, we expect you to represent our interest to the state of Connecticut and make sure this experimental vaccine is not mandated. The country is divided, or town is divided, but we all want what we think is best for our children. Please make decisions that will bring us together instead of pulling us apart. By that, I mean taking away our individual right of choice to pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. God bless the children. God bless all of you. God bless the troops. God bless Greenwich, and God bless America. Thank you for doing that.
So look out, we are going to transfer monthly reports, and we are starting with the superintendent report, Dr. Jones. Thank you very much. I'm going to keep it short tonight because I know it's already 8:30. Just a couple of reminders. We did present the budget, so encourage the Board of Ed to please get your questions. If you could send those to me as quickly as you can so we can start getting answers to those. Our next meeting on December 2nd is a budget meeting where we will discuss the budget for 2223. Also, I want to say congratulations to all of our DHS students that were inducted into the Honor Society. It was such a delight to be at that event. It was the first large-scale event that we have participated in since COVID started, and it was just a great feeling to have the entire PAC Center packed, actually. And our Cardinal Ribbon Cutting, I know that Ms. Philly will probably mention that as well, but what a wonderful day that was, even with the thunderstorm and all. We knew we actually got out of the stands really quickly, so. But it was a great, great day. And then last but not least, just, we are back to doing a lot of our shirt experiences and some of our enrichment. Thanks to our PTA for really helping support a lot of that, and our kids are really having some wonderful experiences. If you're not on Twitter, it is fun just to actually see all the hands-on activities that our students are engaged in now, which is so different than what we looked like just a year ago. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Yes, why? Ms. Paulski? Sure. Dr. Jones, I had a follow-up question from some of the comments that were made today specifically regarding teachers and getting COVID tests. This is another meeting in which we're hearing it, and we're also getting email correspondence about it. And I'm wondering what the feasibility is to give access to teachers that do test readily access and readily access to this spit test. It seems that other places are doing it. I don't know if we've looked into it. What is the cost component? Can we cover the cost component? Is there no cost component? How can we make this a little bit easier? I am concerned about winter travel and this three-hour thing that they're talking about, and that doesn't seem like the best use of anybody's time.
Yeah, and I will say, I know we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, and it really hasn't changed. The Connecticut Department of Health has state testing sites. They determine where they are, and they determine what type of testing is available. Right now, that's the only one I know of that staff have shared is in, I think, Meriden. And I know See Little nodding her head. She knows we have called around. All the suggested sites that might be able to do the spit tests or saliva tests have not been able to come to fruition. And part of that is the Connecticut Department of Health also has a certain standard of testing. So if you think about it like a saliva test that you can go buy CVS, a home test kit, you can't use those. So even the type of testing we did last spring, when we did the full testing, those don't count either. It has to be a lab-science-based test, and we have not been able to find a vendor that would actually come here and into Greenwich and offer that. But we have been working on it as recently, again, this week. If we could offer it, and somebody would come here and If we could offer it and somebody would come here and we could do it, we absolutely would. But we just haven't been able to make it happen and it's not from lack of effort. I might add too, if I'm supposed to be, but we also reached out and I know the GEA has to our state representatives, you know, trying to see if we can get some help at the state level to get the Connecticut Department of Health to set up additional. But we have not had any, Noel Moore has a representative.
Should I finish during my question?
Actually, we've got her.
Doctor. I'll happily fix that.
Okay, Ms. Paulski.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, sorry, Ms. Austin, all the way down there.
I don't have a microphone.
Yeah.
I've got this. I'm still.
Yeah, hold it. Hold it while you talk.
Does it have to be a state testing site or can it not be at a hospital that might have this kind of science?
So the sites that they have set up have no cost to them. It's all being funded by the Connecticut Department of Health. We have reached out just seeing if we can get a site to set up. Teachers would have to submit their health insurance, which we've been told would be like literally $100 to $200 per test. The pool testing that they do is significantly less, but again, those don't count. And I might just add, when you compare us to like, say a fire department or New York, New York and Connecticut have different you know, standards for what they do allow or don't allow. Same way with the fire department, if they want to offer testing or require testing because they want to, they can use any time they want, which is where we were last year. We offered it, people that wanted to participate in this, didn't, didn't, but now we're under the actual mandate.
Go ahead, Ms. Harvey.
Well, I mean, I'm just adding on and I just say, I know I had spoken with Ms. Trump as well, who said that state reps are also trying to push for this as well. But if we're able to open the pre-vaccine clinics at the schools through, you know, hospitals and whatever, I would hope that they would also want to be able to provide us with spit testing sites. They'll provide them an opportunity to use our facilities, otherwise I don't know what we would need to do for that. But it would seem like a fair quid pro quo, so to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly the state is using, I think it's Griffin Health or Griffith Health, which is a hospital. And they are the ones that are doing their free clinics around the state, that they would not make a commitment to be here every week even for vaccine. You know, they have, they travel around the state and go to different school sites and set up for those school sites. I think it could be helpful and which a lot, most school districts are doing like we are.
Thank you. All right, next up, reports of committees and liaisons. Anyone?
Just a brief note, DTAC met this week and went over some of the plans going forward. And hopefully people will start seeing some nice letters from us in their mailbox soon, asking for support with DTAC. So more information is coming soon.
No one else? Okay, we'll be talking about that later.
Thank you. I forgot also, CAC met this week and they went over the special education plans, action plans, and actually had quite a good discussion with Dr. Hagenfeller, who also held a town hall to go over questions from parents and the other community members. I know they'll be meeting again to get some further detail with their committees and beyond. But I don't know if that meeting was recorded, but the town hall by Dr. Stacy Hagenfeller was recorded. So parents that want to see what questions might have been asked and answered can find that on our website.
Great, all right. So nothing else, let's move to discussion items. And the first thing I see is big ideas implementation update. Dr. Jones, should I just turn this over to Sergeant D'Amico and Mr. Reed?
Good evening Chairwoman Stowe, members of the Board, Superintendent Jones. Our rollout of the Big Ideas Math Program K8 is well underway. I'm pleased to welcome Mr. Mike Reed to share with you all that we have accomplished thus far and what is yet to come. Mr. Reed, take it away.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Reed. I'm the program coordinator for K8 Mathematics. Thank you to the Board, Dr. Jones and Mr. D'Amico for entrusting me with the oversight of our K8 Mathematics Program. I look forward to discussing past, current and future implementation of the Big Ideas Math Program with you this evening. Next slide, please. So I thought it'd be nice if we started off with some of our students engaged in the program. These are some pictures from around the district of our teachers and our students engaged in the Big Ideas resource. You know, we're in full force at this point and getting more comfortable with each passing day. Next slide. So why Big Ideas Math? First, we need to understand the Greenwich Public Schools mathematics curriculum is aligned with the Connecticut Core Standards and is committed to providing all students with a high-quality, comprehensive and challenging program. The program provides consistent opportunities for students to develop the knowledge, skills and capacities necessary to be college and career-ready. I'm very excited to present our implementation progress tonight. Before we get started with what the district has been working on, I think it's important for everyone to understand why the Greenwich Public Schools have decided on the Big Ideas Math Program. Big Ideas Math is written by renowned authors, Dr. Ron Larson and Dr. Lori Boswell. It offers a seamless, seamless math pedagogy from kindergarten through algebra II. Together, Ron and Lori provide a consistent voice that encourages students to make connections through cohesive progressions and clear instruction. Since 1992, Ron and Lori have authored over 50 mathematics programs. Doctors Larson and Boswell use the latest educational research along with the body of knowledge collected from expert mathematics instructors to develop the Big Ideas Math Program. By implementing the work of renowned researchers from across the world, Big Ideas Math offers at least a full year's growth within a full year's learning, while also encouraging a growth mindset in students and teachers. Students take their learning from surface level to deep level, then transfer that learning by modeling real-life situations. The pedagogical approach used in this program follows the best practices outlined in the most prominent and widely-accepted educational research, including, but not limited to, visible learning for mathematics, universal design for learning and rigorous PBL by design. The two words I really want everybody to walk away from this presentation with are coherence and rigor. And this will start to address some of Mrs. Duff's questions earlier and then I'll try to get more specific about those later on in the presentation. Big Ideas is coherent because it is designed by a single authorship team that has intentional progression of content within each grade and between grade levels. Our students will build new understanding on foundations from prior grades and connect concepts throughout each course. It is also a rigorous program because it provides a balance of three important building blocks. Conceptual understanding, better known as discovering why. Procedural fluency, also known as learning how. And application knowing, better known as when to apply. Encouraging mathematical mindsets is woven into every lesson. One of the primary goals of the program is to develop proficiency in the mathematical practices, more simply known as becoming a mathematical thinker. Students learn to ask why and to reason and communicate with others as they learn. Next slide, please. Many of the things we do as educators have a positive effect on student learning, but which ones have the greatest impact? This program purposefully integrates five key strategies proven to have some of the highest impact on student achievement regardless of content. Teacher clarity. Before starting a new topic, we make sure the learning targets are clear. As students explore and learn, they continue to connect their experiences back to the success criteria so they know where they are in their learning. Feedback. Teachers will actively listen as they probe for student understanding, being mindful of the feedback that they provide. When students provide teachers with feedback, they are able to see where students are in their learning and make instructional decisions for where to go next. Classroom discussion. Students are encouraged to talk together, not like in the old days when we were in school. This solidifies understanding while honing their ability to reason and construct arguments. Students benefit from hearing the reasoning of classmates and hearing peers critique their own reasoning. Direct instruction. Following exploration and discovery with explicit instruction to build procedural skill and fluency is essential to accelerated growth. Teachers have access to clear examples that have been carefully designed to ensure their students meet the success criteria of each lesson. And finally, spaced practice, some people know this as spiral review, is an effective practice that does not just focus on a single topic of new learning. Students must revisit concepts over time so deeper learning occurs. Big Ideas cohesively offers multiple opportunities for students to build their conceptual understanding by intentionally revisiting and applying concepts throughout subsequent lessons and chapters. Review and refresh exercises in every lesson also provide continual practice on the major topics. So one of the main things to address, Mrs. Duff's question earlier, is our sort of steady sort of drop in scoring. These practices, as you can see, have a very high effect size. So they are well-known meta-analyses that have been done over many years. And by implementing this program, which is aligned and with these practices embedded, we should be seeing more than a year's growth during a school year. Next slide, please. So I've analyzed the results of our most recent SBA data and identified three areas of focus in each grade level. The SBA breaks the data down into targets which may have multiple standards within each target. If you use grade three as an example, your target B consists of two separate standards. Apply properties of operations as strategies to multiply and divide and understand division as an unknown factor problem. Whereas target J is solve real-world and mathematical problems involving perimeters of polygons. I've highlighted our most high-leverage targets which fall in the categories of number and quantity and algebra and functions. Big Ideas breaks these domains down into the specific standards and then learning targets in the teacher resources. Embedded in these documents are not only the chapters, but also the exact lessons where all these targets are addressed. Spaced practice in each lesson provides students with opportunities to practice and revisit the major targets in each grade level. Next slide, please. Similarly, in grades six through eight, you can see the highlighted high-leverage targets. The same roadmap and spaced practice is incorporated in our middle-school level courses. Over time, as our students progress through the program, they will benefit from the vertical uniformity in both visual layout, but more importantly, conceptual progression. So in essence, this is a fresh start for us. We have a resource that's fully aligned to the Common Core standards with a roadmap that is so granular for teachers that the clarity is crystal clear. Also, one of the comments that Mrs. Duff brought up earlier was our assessment metrics. Previously, we had usually around six unit assessments throughout the year. Now we have upwards of 12 and in some cases 15, so we're assessing in a summative fashion more frequently. So we're going to have our hands on the pulse, you know, basically twice as much as we used to, which is wonderful. And most importantly, it's the teacher clarity. Everybody knows exactly what they're doing. They know where to find the resources. And if they can't, they know to call me because most of them have my cell phone number. Next slide, please. So Big Ideas has laid out their cohesive progressions through the grades in all domains with the titles of number and quantity, algebra and functions and geometry, measurement, data and probability. This is an example of number and quantity progressions. Embedded in this progression are five domains and how they align throughout the program. If you focus on the middle row, you can see number and operations base 10 in grades K through 5 naturally progresses into the number system in grades 6 through 8. This chart is accessible to every teacher K through 8 and not only lays out the standards, but it also guides the teachers to the corresponding chapter by grade level. This allows teachers to pinpoint resources to enrich and remediate their students. Next slide, please. So to date, GPS teachers have had six opportunities to receive support directly from Big Ideas consultants. May 2021, June 2021, two opportunities in August 2021, October 2021 and just recently on Election Day. Coming recently from the classroom, I am acutely aware of the importance of collecting teacher feedback and insight to design professional development opportunities. Following the August 30th training, a survey was sent out to gather information on what supports the teachers were looking for during the November 2nd professional development. We had 131 responses, which I was thrilled about. And after analyzing the responses, there were clear commonalities across the district. Most teachers wanted more support with lesson management, differentiation and logistics. That said, we designed sessions to support teachers in these areas. Simultaneously, our math interventionists and select teachers in each building, along with myself, attended a train-the-trainer session. The purpose of this session was to extend further into implementation, covering topics such as differentiation, assessment, technology or instructional practices, supporting effective implementation of Big Ideas learning programs. These building instructional leaders will provide in-building supports to increase teacher understanding, comfort and calculated risk-taking within the program. These lead teachers will support their colleagues in the implementation of Big Ideas learning programs with fidelity. This comprehensive training will provide opportunities to empower and build sustainable success from within our school district. Next slide, please. So moving forward, GPS teachers will have two additional opportunities this school year to receive support with the implementation of Big Ideas. January 14th and March 25th. As stated in the previous slide, we will continue to gather feedback from our teachers to support their growth within the program for the 2122 school year. While Big Ideas does offer some boxed opportunities for professional development as illustrated, we will make sure to tailor the upcoming professional development to ensure the content is relevant and useful. In the 2223 school year, we will continue to design professional development from the classroom up. And I can't give enough of a shout-out to the Big Ideas people that support us. They are responsive and they are adaptable and they rise to every challenge that we throw their way. So I'm looking forward to a wonderful relationship moving forward. So what's next? In order to know where we're going, we have to know where we've been. This past summer, we had a rather large committee of teachers, coaches, consultants and administrators creating and designing support documents to help the teachers transition to Big Ideas. Next summer, we will shift from a creation phase to a refinement phase. We will take teacher feedback and refine our delivery, pacing and supports where necessary. Our guiding principles will always be coherence and rigor with students at the center. Next slide, please. The following slides will illustrate the three typical pathways a student may follow when they get to middle school. It is important to note that with Big Ideas Math come new compacted pathways, which almost completely eliminate missed content which we had in the past. This is a typical, in this slide, on-grade-level pathway. If you focus on the left side of the graphic, this would be a natural three-year progression. There are opportunities for students to accelerate over the summer as illustrated by the jump to the middle and right columns. Throughout the year, we will collect information inclusive of formative and summative assessments, daily assignments, link-it data, work habits, et cetera, to help form a picture of each student. We will not only use any, we will not use any singular assessment to determine placement. In March, we will begin the process of meeting with building administrators and teachers to determine appropriate placement of each student. Parents will be notified of the district's proposed placement and have the opportunity to appeal. Final decisions for placement will be made prior to April break. During May and June, we will continue to gather information on students and adjust placements as necessary. Next slide, please. This slide shows a single-grade-level jump. Our students entering 6A or 6 Advanced no longer miss any content. Big Ideas has created advanced pathways to cover three years of content in a two-year span, which would put our students on track to complete algebra by the end of grade 8. This advanced pathway has eliminated a longstanding concern of students skipping grade 6 content completely. If you focus on the left side of the graphic, this would be a single jump, three-year progression. There are also opportunities to accelerate over the summer as illustrated by the jump to the middle and the right columns. And next slide, please. Our third pathway is for students that start off with a double jump in grade 6. Our grade 5 ALP students will naturally, and are Our grade five ALP students will naturally, and those are our math ALP students, will naturally feed into this pathway with no skipping of content. As stated earlier, we will use multiple classroom measures of both ability and work habits to determine if a general education student will make a single or double jump. We will engage in the typical building advisory committee transition procedure so that all stakeholders, students, parents, teachers, and administrators have a voice in each student's middle school math placement. It is important to note that middle school administrators monitor placement in all courses very closely and will adjust students as necessary once they matriculate to middle school. Next slide, please. So what are people saying around the district? Here are some examples of what's being said at various levels around the district. Overall, the implementation of Big Ideas math has been positive. In general, as I visit the K-8 buildings, I encounter teachers that are grateful to finally have a program with all the resources they need. That said, change can be hard and overwhelming. We will continue to listen to teachers, administrators, and parents to ensure they feel supported. Robin Sharma, a Canadian author, sums it up pretty nicely. Change is hard at first, it's messy in the middle, and it's gorgeous at the end. I look forward to our bright math future in the Greenwich Public Schools. Next slide, please. So I figured we'd bookend this presentation with some more students at work in the classroom. You could see here various grade levels inclusive of middle school and you know, everybody's all the way in getting their hands dirty and it's really, really exciting. Next slide, please. So that concludes the presentation and I welcome any questions at this time.
Thank you. No, go ahead. I know we had a speaker ask the same question earlier, but I did hear when you were talking about the middle school level, we have double jump. We've not had the opportunity to offer Algebra II to them before. I know when we had done the Big Ideas math book review, that was, that was a very exciting thing to hear that they would be, they would be able to offer Algebra II as part of this program. Is this something that we're going to be looking to possibly bring into our schools as a taught class at the middle school? Because I know there are a lot of students, in addition to one student with his parents sitting next to him, who have students that are hitting Algebra II in middle school. And you really are very difficult to, it's very difficult to teach them when they're not being offered Algebra II classes at the middle school.
Yep, so that's a great question slash comment and we are trending towards having more and more students entering Algebra II prior to high school. This year, we have a handful. Next year, we're already predicting that we'll have, you know, maybe twice as many. And we have many different options currently. We've been using CTY as one of our vehicles. Our small handful of students are actually working with a Greenwich High School teacher, Mr. Skirkanich currently. That worked out well this year for us, but we'll be taking a look at what our options are and what impacts those have to our budget and how to operationalize that moving forward. But you know, I think we all share a common goal. We would love to have our kids with our teachers and you know, have live instruction. So you know, we're going to take in all the information, look at the enrollment and you know, luckily I have some really wonderful people to work with to help me figure that out and, and we'll make sure we, we give them the supports that they need. But it's definitely trending that way, that we have more students in Algebra II prior to the end of eighth grade.
Well, I'd love to hear a little bit more about that at some, some later meeting. And I just wanted to confirm, I know that you guys had, you know, professional development to teach K-8 teachers how to use Big Ideas math and more. Was that mandatory at the very start and the two that are upcoming? Is it just sort of opt-in to the teachers that want a little bit more training?
So great question. So at the end of last school year in May, we had optional. And then in June, we had a mandatory training. And then in August, we had an optional training. And then our August 30th training was mandatory. Our November 2nd training was mandatory. January will be mandatory and March will be mandatory.
Thank you, and this was a great update. Glad to see it's, it's being received well within the district.
Thanks.
Ms. Compton? So previously, for Benner Works, at least in our experience, it was the Spring Star assessment that would determine a child's placement in middle school. And this is, I'm talking about a fifth grade assessment. What are our assessment tools now? I know you're the classroom teacher and, you know, I just wondered if there was a concrete assessment that we're giving across the board.
Yep, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to move away from a high-stake singular test that determines whether a student gets into a program. And so we want to look at the whole body of evidence. So in, in, you know, in that vein, we're going to be looking at their summative assessments by chapter. We're going to be looking at their most recent Lincoln data, which would be their Form B, which happens in January. We'll look at their formative assessments that the teachers give in the classroom, which could be classwork, could be exit tickets, things of that nature. We're going to look at their work habits and we're going to really triangulate. You know, being the son of a land surveyor, I know that one point is never a good reference and two is pretty good, but you'd rather have three, four, or five. And so we're moving towards an approach that is not weighted in one singular assessment, but rather, you know, sort of equally weighted across the student's entire body of work.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. There was a number of things I really appreciated today. I love that you put pictures of kids in there and show what math like to look like in the classroom. I love that you talked about the learning science behind the program. And I love that you stressed the coherence of the program. I really, I really appreciate that. That was helpful. One, a couple of things that I'm wondering about, because we know from the achievement presentation last month, we know there were undoubtedly a number of learning gaps. They, how, how is the math instruction, how is the public's guess in where students are and where this program is? So how, how are we addressing that kind of, those kinds of needs that gets things back on track?
So to reinforce exactly what I said earlier, the program is perfectly aligned to the Common Core state standards. So we know exactly where these standards and skills and topics fall in each grade level, in each chapter, in each section. So we've identified where those are by chapter and we know exactly, you know, you know, where the students will be learning them, not necessarily when, because every class sort of adjusts to their own, their own clientele and moves at the pace that's appropriate for them. But we know exactly where these skills are found and so we're able to either slow down or speed up depending on whatever the skills are. So I showed you the high leverage skills in this presentation, the three or four most important ones for each grade level, but I have many more and I know exactly where we find them in the Big Ideas math program. So in those areas and those spots, we will slow down and take a little bit more time to secure that knowledge. But also, if you think vertically as well, as students from year to year progress through the program, they become more comfortable, the teachers become more clear. And so that spaced review becomes more and more important to address those priority standards. And that spaced review is focused on those priority standards, which tend to be areas where we, we have some weaknesses. So the program itself is naturally aligned, but we've also identified exactly where it happens and so we can slow down and refine our practice in those areas.
Mr. Reed, perhaps you might want to add on and talk a little bit about the added value of our math interventionists at the elementary level now?
Yes, so we are very, very lucky. We were able to double our math interventionist program from five to 10 and then we have a one Title I math interventionist, we have 11 total. And that means we have a 1.0 billet in each building, which allows us to do two things. It allows us to see more kids that need intervention or remediation, but it also provides us the time to support tier one instruction. So our math interventionists are able to get into the classrooms and support those teachers with, with their instruction for their entire class. So I'm really excited about, you know, building this program out. I'm very hopeful we're able to operationalize these five extra interventionists into our budget moving forward because we need these resources. They were sorely missed for many years and I can already see the fruits of our labor and just the smiles on kids' faces and, and you know, we, we have a lot of support this year, so we're very lucky where, where math is concerned.
That makes sense. I think I'm glad you mentioned the intervention. Spacing is great as a retrieval practice, it's less important. It's less effective if we're talking about something that hasn't been learned originally. What, this one other question, you mentioned the opportunity for PD to clarify. So like you had on the slide, the, I think the one workshop was create classrooms that concentrate on learning needs by differentiating. Is that an opportunity or is that, is that one of the mandated?
I'm sorry, you're a little bit muffled, so I couldn't catch that whole, that whole question if you could just, if you could repeat it?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I was trying to figure out, you mentioned the opportunity, you mentioned the word opportunities for PD on the slide about future training. I just wanted to clarify if, like, for example, the first one is creating math classrooms that concentrate on learner needs by differentiating the instruction. Is that one of the ones that you mentioned are, is for everybody or is that, is that an opportunity that teachers can select from?
Right, so on the August 30th training, we, we provided everybody with sort of the updates to the new platform and, you know, sort of a general but deeper overview from what they had gotten the previous year. Then what we did was we collected feedback from the teachers. We found exactly what their highest priorities were. We tailored the November 2nd PD to what they were asking for. In a couple of weeks, I'll send out another form and I'll say, what would you like to see next? Then I'll go back to my Big Ideas consultants and we'll build that out and we'll, we'll figure out where, you know, people would go, quite possibly give them the option. So if we had two to four consultants with two to four options, they could pick and choose which things they wanted to go to and, and to support their needs. So we have a lot of options on the table. It will depend on the feedback I get. I'm hoping for another 131 responses, but you know, we're, we're going to be bubbling things grassroots from the ground up. And, and you know, when I say opportunities, I mean opportunities to engage in meaningful work where they have a chance to actually dive deep and then plan with their colleagues.
If I could just add on to that, I think one of the things that we're also trying to be very considerate of is the teachers that we haven't hired yet. So we are archiving all of our professional learning opportunities in mathematics. So we're recording all of these sessions so that any teacher, teachers that we currently have and our future teachers that we will onboard have the opportunity to go through these trainings.
Anyway, I'm new, so I, could you send me after the meeting, whatever the academic research is around this on what, what, you know, I assume there's been controlled studies in this program, what impact it's expected to have on test scores or whatever other measurements have been about, you know, whatever this, what we expect.
I, I think what I heard you say, I'm sorry, for some reason that side of the room is muffled. I think what you wanted to see was the research of the program and the successes it's had in other areas.
Yeah, yeah, if you wouldn't mind just sending that.
Yep, absolutely no problem.
Second is a follow-up. Do we establish how long to measure how successful we are at implementing this and what, what we expect to get out of it in a quantitative fashion? I, one thing I noticed in presentations is all qualitative commentary, it's definitely to, you know, allow the board member to say, okay, I, I see how we're going to be tracking our successes.
So I'm sorry, I think what you said was how are we measuring it from a quantitative perspective?
Yes.
Right, so what we would do historically is we'd look back at our data and we would see what the trend was, what the areas were where we had, so successes or weaknesses. And then obviously, we had that little blip in the radar where we didn't have any assessment, assessment, and then we have our SBA scores from last year. So we typically focus on our SBA scores, three through eight, to, to give us our quantitative measures for how successful the program is. We also use Lincoln, which would be in-house, and that is second through eighth. So we would use that to sort of assess the progress as we're going. So I guess to sum that up, our summative measure would be our SBA scores.
And do you know how long it will take for the benefits of the program to roll through?
You know, I, I think it really is determined by the comfort level of the teachers. One of the main reasons why we chose this program is it's very scripted and there are insights at every level on how to help all types of learners, from our ELL learners to our students that have struggles. And as the teachers become more comfortable, that's when we're going to see the greatest amount of success. And as they collaborate, one of John Hattie's visible learning data pieces is collective teacher efficacy, and that's how they understand what they're doing and how they work together towards a great, a common good. And that has the greatest effect size of anything. So this resource provides that uniformity so that we can all be speaking the same language. So with that same language comes the teacher clarity, with the teacher clarity comes the collective teacher efficacy. And with that, the, the data is just there, the, the students should improve. But as far as a timeline is concerned, you know, I, I haven't really put a hard time on that, but I would say within, you know, two years, we should be seeing some very positive trends. That's my hope, but I'm also always a glass half full kind of a guy.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Just one quick question, Mike, going to the CTY program, and I guess we probably use it sporadically, at what point do we say, you know, when you have six children in a grade, is it, is that the point at which you say, okay, now it's more effective, efficient to be the teacher? I'm not sure how much the licenses cost, but is that how we're making that decision?
I'm sorry, again, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's the sound on my end, if you could repeat that.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, basically, I was just trying to understand, as more and more children seem to be triple jumping, but there is, there are times when the CTY, right, to bridge for, for select students. But is there, I guess, a breaking point at which we sort of say, 62 Y licenses, now it makes sense for us to have an additional teacher actually teaching the class? Do we, is that how we make that decision? Or how do we, how do we figure this out?
So I believe what you're asking is do we start to change structurally how we're, how we're managing the students and how we're instructing them? You know, obviously, I would, I would be trying to troubleshoot that with, with Mark and Dr. Jones, but you are right. Eventually, it comes to a point where you have to start thinking a little bit differently. I don't know that we're there yet, but we're always going to look to innovate, we're always going to research and see what other districts are doing that are having great success. And you know, I, I would, I would not like to say, yeah, we would add more teachers because that means money, but you know, we will always put all options on the table and, and present it to you all to make a decision. And you know, in my mind, every option is an option. But for right now, we would stay status quo with our logistics, get everybody comfortable with the program, most importantly, the students. And then when we start to see maybe a plateau, that's when we try to think a little bit differently to supercharge things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had just a quick question regarding the professional development. Just to clarify, the professional development that's being provided, is that provided by Big Ideas people that have come in and they're providing that, that development? Are we doing it internally through the expertise of the likes of you and Mark have gathered over the course of this, this rollout?
It's mostly our Big Ideas consultants from outside, but we are building internal capacity. So you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, instead of having somebody fish for us all the time, we're going to try to learn how to fish for ourselves. So the idea with that Train the Trainers was to have at least four people, four power users, so to speak, in every building. That could be go-tos for teacher to again, ensure that clarity, ensure that comfort, and then, you know, be a conduit, not only to administrators, but back to me. I meet with my interventionists and my middle school math teachers monthly, more formally, and then obviously- And then obviously in frequent, very frequently informally. And so it's a combination of both, but right now we're leaning heavily on the big ideas math consultants to provide that training.
Okay, so that leads up a couple of follow-up questions, but in one point, which is, one, I've talked to a number of teachers in the elementary schools and they really are loving this program. And they also love the response time that they're getting when they do their questions. That must go to them, these power trainers that you're talking about. I think that that's a great idea to have that resource directly within the schools. But then it goes, because we're using big ideas consultants to help continue us on the training. I was just curious from a budgetary's perspective, and we probably talked about this when the original rollout, but do we have, how was it built into our budget? Dr. Jones, it's probably a question for you. But how was it built into our budget when we have additional training in January and March? Is that already slated for? Do we need to take into account? Karen, like, she's shaking hands, so she, I'm sorry, I don't. I was gonna say, I mean, Mike and, and Mr. Demigre would probably be best to answer this, but it was part of the program.
So.
Textbooks, the PD was included.
Yes, so the PD, everything for this year was included. So all the trainings for this year, then after this year moving forward, we would, we would have to fund that ourselves depending on what we would be looking for.
Okay, and I guess if it's anticipated, we would try to figure out a way to build that in. Tony, maybe you've given some thoughts of that.
Yes, they do have a curriculum budget so that they have professional development funds to, you know, plan for the year.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Good to meet you, Mr. Reed.
You're welcome. Have a nice night.
Thanks so much.
Take care.
Moving on, next discussion item, the racial balance report. Dr. Caravilla.
All right. Good evening, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, new board members, returning board members, colleagues, and the Greenwich community. Tonight I will share an overview of the racial balance report. The Connecticut State Board of Education with Regulation Section 10-226E-1 requires that each Board of Education submit information on the racial composition of each school by grade, the racial composition of the teachers, and the number of students who are eligible to receive free or reduced lunches. We have been cited as a district that has a racial imbalance. The good news is that Greenwich continues to become increasingly diverse, with more students identifying as Hispanic or two or more races. All students, when they register in our schools, identify themselves in the following categories that are required by the state. Asian, Black, Caucasian, Hispanic, Native American, Pacific Islander, and two or more races. In the past 10 years, there has been an increase in diversity in our district from 29.5% to 39.6%. Hispanics appear to be the greatest increase of students for 18.1% to 22.6%. The racial balance is calculated as the variance between the minority enrollment of a specific school and the district minority enrollment average. The threshold for racial imbalance is plus or minus 25% from the district average for each school's makeup. For example, K5 schools are only compared to K5 schools. Two of our schools, Hamilton Avenue and New Lebanon School, have made great progress since last, our last report in 2019. But they continue to be cited as racially imbalanced. The state requires districts to present a plan to demonstrate how they're addressing that imbalance. Then they require updates on that progress. Our update will be next December, next month, December. We have five schools that are impending racial imbalance, which is plus or minus 15% from the district percentage. Those schools are Julian Curtis, ISD, Parkway, Old Greenwich, and North Street School. Western Middle School has made great progress and is at plus 13% and is now below the impending threshold of racial imbalance. The chart on page two in your report demonstrates the racial balance status of all schools and the Greenwich Public Schools collective average. Western Middle School has a total of 41 students who attend by choice. And by choice, we mean magnet students, tuition students, or out of attendance exceptions. 7% or 254 elementary students attend magnet schools. ISD has the largest number of magnet students. Julian Curtis has 29% of its students as magnet students. Hamilton Avenue has 12% of their students as magnet students. And 13% of the students at New Lebanon are magnet students. So to summarize, Greenwich continues to become increasingly diverse. Hamilton Avenue and New Lebanon have narrowed their racial imbalance, but will continue to be cited as racially imbalanced. Western Middle School is plus 13% and is now below the threshold of impending racial imbalance. 89% of our elementary school students attend their resident school. 254 elementary students attend our four elementary magnet schools of ISD, Hamilton Avenue, New Lebanon, and Julian Curtis. And any questions?
Ms. Hirsch. I think I actually sent this in. Thank you for, for the update. And while I know that the report certainly was required at state, I just wanted to, unclear as to how we're gonna plan to use the data in this report specifically. As it was listed under the goal of closing the achievement gap, it didn't really have any suggestive actions towards doing so noted. So I'm just wondering if we'll be getting more information on that or how will we be able to use this data to support, support the students?
Are you talking specifically about achievement gap or specifically about racial imbalance?
Well, I was gonna say specifically about the achievement gap is, that was what it was listed as on our agenda. So I'm just wondering if it was listed as that's the goal. I'm wondering how we might be utilizing this data in order to close that achievement gap.
We didn't address it in the racial imbalance report, but we can get that information too.
That would be great. Thank you.
I have a question for the other.
Why don't you jump back in the coffee office?
So, so I know there's a lot, a lot of history here and it's, and it's important history. And I know that magnet programs, you know, 10 years ago, I know the community went through a, a very good conversation about this. So I want to make sure, um, the way I'm standing, because I think it's important to, to know that, right, to, to talk about how the, the magnet programs are affecting, I think it's a different question than whether or not the magnet programs are innovative, self, good, good for students. So that's, that's a separate question. But as far as how it's affecting this number, well, the racial imbalance, I think that's, that's an important thing to tease out here. I don't quite, not quite there. I don't quite understand because, so because I know that the diversity of the district overall has increased. And so at the same time, the diversity, so the gap has decreased at New Lebanon and Hamilton Avenue. What's the actual number for the effectiveness of the magnet program strengthening the gap? The, are we able to take away the, because if I'm looking at this, it's almost like the, the diversity of the district is a wall. Can we, are we able to tease out in any more specific way how effective the actual magnet programs are in addressing the racial imbalance?
I know that in 2019, when we looked at the report, we looked at all of the achievement of the magnet schools. But I think, which had an impact on the schools that were developed because of the racial imbalance, with the exception of ISD. But I believe that we really can't do that right now because of the, of COVID the past year and a half. But that's something that we can look into. So I'd be happy to look into that for you.
Thank you. I, I would argue that's a, that's a really important thing for us to be mindful of considering the tenure history of your program. I appreciate that.
I was just curious of the more tenured board members. And we obviously have a whole, public commentary. How often does it come up, parents coming and saying that they're worried about their children's schools' racial imbalance?
Yeah, in all honesty, really never. And I say that because, you know, there's, we have community neighborhood schools in elementary, and they love their community schools. And I think the three districts that grapple with this in the state of Connecticut would all say the same.
Maybe I'll make an obvious point, then, is that it's probably good to separate things that parents in the community care about from things that bureaucrats in Hartford report to care about. Maybe that can guide some of how we prioritize our time and focus.
And, and just to kind of add to that, you know, we do have certain things to jump through. And we are back in Hartford, which we have to go and meet with them. But it really, really, there isn't an outcome necessarily. It's paid up today. And especially since we had, some, we had more of a reimbursement, for instance, with our magnet school in Lebanon, than you would normally see on a school construction project. And that largely imparts to this, what we're trying to solve for. So, and but it, it is about being respectful and we go, we meet with the attorney, or we'll meet with the full on board, and we are back there.
Kathleen and Karen have to go to that too.
Since they're newly elected, we'll talk about that tomorrow. We get to go.
Sorry.
I want to revote. Ms. Downey?
Yeah, hi. And I just wanted to confirm when you talk about school choice as an element. Choice, I just want to be sure I understand the definition correctly. It includes our magnet students and our tuition students and any kind of the superintendent exemption. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is.
And then one other, like, kind of minutiae point. On our, on the chart on page two, we talk about the grade level district average. From what I can tell, it seems like our pre-K count in that average, not just K through 12. Is that correct?
The preschool is in that average because we have to compare the schools that have preschools. So the preschool schools, the pre-K five schools are compared together. And then you have your K5 schools that are compared together, and your 6A, and we don't have Greenwich High School because that's one high school.
Okay, great. I just want to clarify on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one question, and maybe it's just the math that's throwing me. The Western Middle School seems to be really the, maybe it's not the only school, but within the right range. And the feed-in schools to Western Middle School, if I'm not mistaken, our New Lab, Hamilton Avenue, I think part of Parkway. I'm not aware of any other, so, oh, and Glenville. Where is that popular? I, so I guess the influx of Parkway and Glenville are helping shape out the our, our, our percentage there of Western Middle School. Is that how that's working out?
We were actually in a discussion, was it, and I believe where we were looking at the total number of students that
Yes.
or tuition students that are, and, and they have, they're about 41. It's, they're coming from across the town to actually attend this magnet school. And, you know, if you go back to that 2019 kind of data, you know, they were performing equally as Central and Eastern. And because they are now an avid magnet, and they're parents that have a real interest in that and feel like the students need it. And it's a great school. So I think that 41 does make a difference.
Well, I think that, and I'll give you some short partings to it over there. Mark can bring on there. So kudos to him. Okay, nothing further. Move on to our next quick discussion item. Oh, one of my favorite things, the board of education being held. Trying to see Dr. Jones.
So this calendar really models similar to what we have this year. You know, we made some adjustments where if you go back a couple of years, we've had a lot more meetings. So you can always consider adding more. But we also look, if you look at the notes and the comments at the top, all the things that have to be considered, you know, dates when you can't meet. One, one thing I would say on here that we do need to, when we look at location and an adjustment, when you look at the meeting dates, is that we used to always go to a different location to an actual school, just to visit the school. So the board will have to decide if we are going to always, or now going forward, which I hope we will offer people at home to be able to watch virtually and also live to the current page, is just quadruple. So if we're going to do that, it would be our recommendation that we stay here at Central because if, then, then we can still allow engagement from home. If every month we're moving to all of our different schools, it's too difficult. We don't have the equipment at all of our schools in order to be able to do that. It adds to complexity. So it just means the location would always be Central and virtual versus traveling. But again, if we travel, we can't do the virtual. You can still livestream it, let me say that. You can't have participation. That's the part that gets so difficult. So staff would have to be here if they're presenting, which it's been wonderful also for our staff who commute hours and hours when we get finished at 11 at night. You know, they've been able to be virtual and meet home. It's wonderful for parents that are giving their public comment, but have little ones at home that would never come to our meetings. Now they're able to do that. So that's a consideration for the board.
If I, I'm just, at one point, I was gonna make the Japal on that. I don't think we need to make that decision tonight. It's just something like proof of thought, like I agree 100%. Keeping our meetings available on Zoom, I think we've had universal requests before that, from the community to their ability to listen and participate. My one thought, and when you made the point about aggravating and not that I'm, I'm wanting to have a meeting. But I think, I think I'm taking a lesson from last month's meeting. I think in October in particular, I think I would add a second meeting, especially when we're talking about we always have our achievement data and our enrollment data, and those are two very meaty topics. And frankly, putting those at a retreat where we can really just dig up, dig our roller sleeves up and dig into them. And also, you know, on a timely basis without, you know, before it's the, the comment where we can really just get into the work. I think it would be much more productive for us as a board. My colleagues may agree or disagree, but just, I, I would urge you to add that one. I can't add, ask for a lot more, but I think that one would be worthwhile. Along with Christine, I was gonna say the same to the one to, to possibly look to add another retreat in the spring and March for a follow-up. You know, to be, be able to give us a kind of a deeper dive, oftentimes a lot of the board would like to, like, people dive into a lot of the different academics and programming that we have, especially with all the new changes to curriculum that, that we're gonna be seeing coming forward. I think that would be really beneficial to get us time to have that deep dive. I know these meetings tend to go really late. Having a retreat, I, I looked at March 3, I think there was a good five plus weeks between meetings in the spring. And I would second to making sure that we can continue offering virtual options for people because it's definitely something the community has asked for. But I would say as a member who has had the opportunity to go to a lot of the different schools over the years, there really is something special to be able to walk into all of the different schools and see the different community. Each school brings to the table, hearing from each individual principal of the schools, seeing how the children perform, and really seeing our buildings in action.
I think one of the most important things that we've had, that we've missed is being able to go into this building to really be able to see what's happening in those schools, not just the work that's up on the wall, but looking at the infrastructure of the building, from sitting in those auditoriums and having the opportunity to visit each one. So I'd love to see if there's a way to find a way to be able to continue to visit those schools and support each one of our, you know, 11 elementarys and teen middles and, and our high school as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna add that. I, I kind of agree. I want to think the virtual option works so well with the parents being able to zoom in in the evening, but I too long going to the different schools and hearing from the different principals. So maybe there's a way to have the principals come to us and hear, we'll be rote, like we'll be here, but this is, you know, reverse last night or whatever. Or alternatively, when we're not having a business meeting, so we're not hearing from the public, sorry to the staff, but maybe those are the times we go to the other schools. Just a thought.
And I could certainly go back and ask the principals, like what might be a good idea. I know one thing that they would love. And I think you have an invitation like that came in your inbox yesterday for New Lebanon, and I know it's at the beginning of the year. But trying to get you out in the billions for authentic activities, more so than even just in the evening. So I think we can do a better job at that. One of my previous districts also during the budget season would do listening tours with the board. And that was a great, just to go out and actually get to see the teacher and stop by the teacher's lounge and, you know, say hello, get the vibe of the building. And, and so we can look at some of those and have those discussions to bring it back. The thing about the meeting in March, just as a reminder, whenever the board asks to change a little bit, I'll see if I can pull the budget calendar because it's the meetings that you end up doing, all those art and meetings and stuff like that. Your nights were so full. So that's why he would ask us to pare it back. So I'll try to get a copy of what it might look like.
Yeah, I had looked, I had looked at the, at March and I, and I didn't see anything around that time, at least this year, but obviously things change every year. So, but Ms. Colf.
Sure. So I like the idea of adding a board retreat and I guess calendaring it would be important because I, when I'm looking at the calendar of what we have coming up in third, in April and May, we're talking about textbook recommendations, first reads for DEP and DIR, DIR, forgive me, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but K through eight. It's only a first read and then shortly thereafter, I think three weeks thereafter, we're voting on it. I think given the curriculum changes and the textbooks, it'd be really helpful to have a more of a add that to a retreat or somewhere else so we can have some index analysis and time for questions related to that, that, that new addition.
Okay. Anything else on that? No? Okay. Right. So moving on now to the school calendar. Dr. Jones.
So this is the proposed calendar for 2023, 2024. Again, our calendars, I know it seems like it's so far away, but it's a little country before we know it. It mirrors pretty much exactly, you know, what we do in Greenwich on an annual basis. There's the week in December. Of course, we have to consider the various holidays and things that you see and religious days that we honor. And then we also have the week in February, which is the February break, and we have the week in April. As a reminder, students must be in school for 180 days. Our teachers must have 187. And we do build in five snow days. So when you look at where the snow day is, we assume that we have, we can have up to five. And if we don't need them, then you have to just get out of school earlier.
Ms. Downey, just a quick question. And actually, Mr. Kittle, maybe you'll actually have a kid in school by then. So the professional learning day in March, do you feel like it's, you know, just kind of in terms of, do you like front loading them? Do you like balancing them out? I know that's kind of, you know, every year the calendar is a little different. But full labor professional learning in March, you feel like it's worth doing at that point in the year, just mid to, you know, through the year?
It is because you can only front load so much for professional development and work so much. So having one in the spring, it's actually a great feeling to reflect on how things are going during the year.
All right. Okay. As long as it comes back to us as an action item. So moving on to our last, I want for discussion. Policy governance, committee policy, first three, Ms. Downey.
Yes, thank you. So policy governance in the process, as we've talked about, of looking at policies that we do not currently have in place or that need modification. One of which we didn't get to, that was in the packet last month, which is one of the action items, our Title Nine policy. For both students and for staff. So what you see here are policies on, for both. And they're both proposed. We actually do have one for staff, but I think we've learned that it's probably not adequate, you know, adequate based on the governing law. So what policy governments did is we really looked at what the options were to put in for a policy. And with these policies were drafted by our outside counsel. Nothing has been changed in them after, we did much discussion and deliberation and looking at some of the wording and consultation with it. Shipman and Goodwin. And because it is so technical and regulated, we really were very cautious about changing anything. So all I said, all we simply did was we added the word Greenwich and we put it in contact information. So what I would ask, I'm happy to take questions. I'm not sure I can answer any of them right now. But what I would ask board members to do is if they look at them and have any questions, and then I can consolidate them and then provide them to Shipman and Goodwin. And they can then answer them for us before a vote in December. So I would ask them, you know, I think most people make, you know, they may be very minor questions just because unless, you know, you have a lot of knowledge in this area. You might not want to ask about a lot of stuff. So anyway, that's where we are on these policies. If anyone has any general questions they want to ask now, we can talk about.
Ms. Colf. I sent you my questions and I appreciate the conversation that we had earlier today about this. And I did have more than general questions than I would appreciate. And as you talked about, I think it's a good idea to have Shipman and Goodwin kind of outline on this. There's a lot of, my concerns were just on what does this exactly mean? How hard does it go? And what are the greater implications? Because the definition seems like broad. So I think that would be
Yeah. And, and there's also some very extensive regulations that accompany these, which Shipman and Goodwin also drafted. And Dr. Jones has been working with them to make sure ours or mirror theirs perfectly, as well as providing contact information and some other details.
Ms. Costa.
I know I briefly spoken about this with some of you. Just to be very clear in our policies and procedures, there's times when when we may see in our, in our policies and procedures, the board and, and GPS used interchangeably. And I just want to be sure we're clear about the board and GPS and where the division of those powers exists.
Yeah, no, I think it's the other point, one of those we've been talking about for years, just broadly. And, you know, we rather, I mean, if it's good stuff, we want to be credit for that for. But if it's bad.
I only mean it refers to the board directing its employees. And I, I, I know we have a lot of power, but I, I only know of one employee.
Yeah. Understood. Okay. Any, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, just quick, the one, the other one thing that I wondered about is the, I don't get into the little thing, but both, both policies clearly identify the deputy superintendent as the board's Title Nine coordinator. The only thing I wonder, you know, sometimes you want to organize the, the senior leadership more differently, you know, if you're still on it. If that could be an HR, HR director, you know, I just don't know if you wanted to give more, the policy committee wanted to give a little more leeway to the superintendent. We put it in the policy that it's always this person. And so it's gonna be this person. It might be the
So when you see the regulation with this new policy, which you probably already know, all, all of the roles and responsibilities are different. And so we actually have two schools that pair up together, and you'll see that in the regulation, where the investigator is actually from a different school and that was, you know, recommended by the actual attorney. The Title One Coordinator is the Title One Coordinator for that school. So the rules are actually outlined without using people's names, but who at each building pairs up together to get through the whole investigative process. So the Title Nine One Coordinator of the district is really more, if I'm somebody who wants to report something and use that email, general email, it goes to like three of us to make sure everybody knows. Then we filter right back down to our, back to the building model with the building title. So we're using our entire entire administration.
And, and also I could be event, you know, the Dr. Jones says, okay, it's really going to be the superintendent who does it going forward. We can then amend the policy. You know, but the notion of that we've, we've been advised, we have to designate someone. And there actually had not been this email address for a Title Nine coordinator. So now we've put that into place. So we're kind of creating systems that'll make it more versatile, nimble and useful in the long run, regardless of who the personnel are.
Very good. Anything else? No? All right. So if you can, you asked for a comment.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask for, well, this ties into what I'm gonna say with the other policies.
Okay. So we go to action items. Sorry. Yeah. I was gonna say the first action item has been actually removed because it didn't require board approval. And there's no reason to bog it down with things that we don't need to do. So that was taken off. And now we are back to Christina.
Yeah. So I know this is listed as an action item. I don't know if I can record to make a motion because we have our new board members. I'm going to table it till our next meeting. I don't know if we need to make a motion for that.
Yeah, you do. I'll set that.
Okay, I'll wait a second. Kathleen, just during the discussion. So for those of you who read, like last month, we presented a number of figures back of our ongoing policies. Crosswalk, it was called, required gaps in coverage. So we presented a number of policies on a mishmash of different topics. Which members of PGC have obviously already looked at and the other existing board members have looked at too. And what I'm gonna ask for three brand new board members is for you to look at them. And please, it's super helpful because there are a variety of them. Give us comments in writing. Just that I think that's more productive because we have already two people's comments and writings. So it's always better to just have them all together. And policy governance is going to be meeting on November 29th on this issue or the December board meeting. So I would ask that you three provide us with the comments, ideally before next, say Monday, before the holiday, and then we will be able to address it thereafter. And then be hopefully in a position to vote on all of these at our December meeting. I just wanted, is there any more discussion on it? That's what I was.
We take a formal vote, just by show of hands, the table is to the next move. All right.
Thank you, Al.
Okay. So then our only action item is, anyone want to make a motion?
Move the
Actually read it.
A motion to accept the natural report for the period, for the period ending October 31st, 2021, as revised.
I'm happy to second that. Okay. Sean.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Laura, Cody and Mike, and welcome back Kathleen. So through October of 2021, our year-to-date actual expenses are currently at 40.5 million, which is 23.6% of our full year budget of 171.9. Compared to the same period last year, our year-to-date spending is up six and a half million, or about 25%. Three minor things, you know, you got the, not minor, but budgeted contractual increases. The year-to-year impact related to supplies. So we had artificially low supply spending through October of 2020, which was a residual impact of the pre-spend at year end in 2020. Services are down a little bit, primarily due to the timing of invoices related to transportation and special ed tuition. That should normalize over the next couple of months. But the vast majority of the increases year to year is the fact that this year we have nine pay periods through October, whereas last year we had only eight. So that will normalize. The, the actually, the last pay period last year in October was actually posted in November. So that phenomenon will offset. So we'll be, you know, our year-to-year impact will be relatively minor at this point. Capital, capital available balances are currently at 28.4 million, including our current year allocation of 13.1. So for the pre 22, available balances of 15.3, that's down about 14.9 million or about 49% from a year ago. And of that, of that 14.9, about two and a half relates to building projects, building committee projects, which are complete, but not yet closed out by the state. So once that happens, two and a half million will, will come out. Continue to focus on the pre 22 spend. You know, our focus is to close them out as soon as possible. On food services, still early to say where we're gonna end the year. But one thing we, I think we know at this point is that our, our cash sales will be down or less than budget. And there'll be an offsetting increase in state reimbursements, given that the free food for all students program is continuing till the end of this school year. That's, that's all I wanted to cover at this point. Is there any questions?
Mr. Kittle.
Can you, in the future, show what it is, the spending versus the budget? The year-to-date budget, it's hard to interpret the percentage of the whole year.
I'm sorry, what was, what was the question? I couldn't hear.
Just for reporting, can you reveal what the spending is relative to the budgeted year-to-date expenditure as opposed to just doing a percentage of the total year?
You know, I think you're asking, do we have a year-to-date budget?
Exactly. He's asking.
We, we do, we do not. We do not have a year-to-date budget. So in other words, we don't have a budget by month, split by month. That's what you're asking.
Okay. I'll maybe take that up at another forum.
Other question? All right. Well, then the action item is on the table to accept the financial report ended up for a good amount. All right. Onto agenda planning. Okay. So our next meeting is the budget meeting. So we won't be adding anything there. But on the 16th, we obviously just have no action policies that we need to add. Oh, sorry. Yes. Yeah, we're just about to ask that. Okay, special ed. The special ed update. On December 16th.
The special ed update on December sixteenth. Yes, Ms. Coloffe?
I have a question, and I think it's, it's a budget, a budget-related question. So I'm wondering if it makes sense to include it in December second meeting, which is in regard to the, the ETSR proposal that came out that relates to the spending on ten million, you know, the ten million dollars that were coming in. I think that might make sense to add it there, since it's all the same. The same Jermaine's money item.
I was looking, yeah, I was looking at Dr. Jones. Let's talk about that. It seems like she might have another, maybe another budget meeting ahead of that. But let's figure that out. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, before we can adjourn, we have to go back to our public hearings in one second. Let's see who moves up. Is Caitlin Haynes still online? She's not here, right? Online?
Ms. Stowe, the only person I'm seeing online still is Mr. Chaney, who was the last speaker.
Okay, so you don't see Sharon Kishma either?
I do not see her either.
Okay. So then to Bob Chaney, please.
Good evening. My name is Bob Chaney and I'm a parent of a child at Julian Curtis Elementary School and a child at Central Middle School. I want to take a moment to give a huge thank you to Dr. Jones and the entire GPS administration, faculty, teachers, et cetera, for everything you guys have done to make the public schools as amazing as they are. And on a personal note, I just wanted to take a minute or so to thank all of the teachers that have helped my two sons over the years get to where they are right now. My younger son is now in fourth grade at Julian Curtis and has had such an amazing experience at JC. He's learning so much and having such a great time. I, of course, can't name all the teachers at JC. But want to give a special thank you to his current teachers, Ms. Mazzilli, Mr. Ellinger, Ms. Willshaw, for making sure my son keeps himself on track this year. My other son also had such an amazing experience with all the same teachers and many others during his time at Julian Curtis as well. I also can't speak about the excellency of the school without mentioning Principal McGuire. Without her at the helm, I don't think JC would be the school that it is today. Now, my older son started his middle school journey this year. As a sixth grader, he is loving middle school. Now, speaking from personal experience, it is not an easy feat to make the first year of middle school a great experience. However, my sixth grader is having a great time and also I feel learning at his level and enjoying his classes. From playing soccer, being in band and enjoying his studies, I couldn't ask for a better experience for him. There are too many teachers to call out personally, so I would just like to thank the entire faculty, I guess, and Principal Healy for everything they're doing at the school. I guess I just really want the teachers to know that there are a lot of parents, my wife and I included, that really appreciate everything that you have done and are still doing right now for the Greenwich Public Schools. Please understand that we have your back and we will be with you to help you in any way we can in the future. Thank you and everyone have a great Thanksgiving break.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney, for being answered. Great to be done. So with that, we're reaching out to all of you over the next few days to talk about what community plans you'd like, what else you're. And with that, you have a motion to adjourn. Yep, Ms. Downey?
Soon.
Okay, the first. All right, all the paper. Eight, zero. Thank you so much for joining. Good night, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.